All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, April 7th. We have a couple of study session items for tonight. Up first is Director of Finance, Kevin Ingles, here to discuss the preliminary 2026 Revenue and Expenditure Underlying Forecast Assumptions. Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kevin Ingles, Director of Finance. Tonight, we're going to take a look at some preliminary revenue and expenditure forecasts for the General Fund. So we'll take a quick look at the CIP process and budget calendars. We'll take a look at some upcoming meetings, then we'll look at our current estimate for where we think we're going to finish 2025, and then we'll take a look out at some future years. So for the CIP process, we're in step one right now. We'll be back next week with preliminary list from departments for their initial requests on capital. Here's the overall budget calendar. See, tonight, we're in, starting Q2, with our forecast assumptions. Then we'll be back, as I mentioned, next week with preliminary capital requests, and then as we get later into the summer, we'll work on bringing you back operating requests for the rest of the city. So some of the information we use to prepare our forecast, inflation is a big part of it. You'll see here on there, the headline is inflation is 3.5% still, and core is 4.1. That's as of March. Those are both numbers that are a little higher than the Federal Reserve would like, but due to a lot of uncertainty recently in political and tariff talk, the Federal Reserve has indicated that probably will not be cutting interest rates anytime soon until they see what the effects of the tariffs are. So we might not have any more decreases in interest rates, maybe until later in the year. So some of the challenges from this forecast, like I mentioned, a lot of uncertainty out there. Federal Reserve is holding on the interest rates. One thing that's important for the city's revenues is consumer confidence. When people aren't certain about what's going to be happening over the next few months, sometimes they tend to not spend their discretionary funds, and that would show up in our sales tax collections. Some other external factors. The financial markets, I'm sure you've all noticed, have been concerned about the tariff talks and about the general political environment. So we're seeing some uncertainty there. One, that bottom section there, and you'll see it in our forecast for property tax, they are, the amount of increase is going to be limited going forward because of some of the new legislation. So you'll see that we have a very conservative projection for property tax. There's a few other numbers that we don't have in yet. We'll incorporate those as we go through the budget process and we get those, those figures in for you. Generally, we're not sure about the insurance rates at this time. We do have a placeholder in there, but we're, we'll, we'll fill those in with the actual numbers as we get them later in the year. Okay, now we're going to take a look at where we're at in 2025. So compared to the original budget, our estimate is just slightly different. We're estimating about an additional 300,000 of spending that, from the change from the original budget. There are a couple of changes in revenues. They're, they're mostly offsetting. We reduced the sales tax estimate by about a million. We increased review fees because we know we have one large project that's coming online this year. So those almost offset each other, and then a couple other small items in there. So we are still estimating to finish the year at just about $14 million of fund balance. Here's how that breaks down. See, the 13.9 million, we're currently estimating, and that still leaves us with a, with a unrestricted reserve of almost 16 and a half percent, or just under 12 million still. All right, now, looking forward. Some of our data for the five-year projection, you know, is based on historical performance for the city. So see on the slide how revenues and expenditures have trended over the, over since 2014. Once again, when we get to our projection slide, you'll see that we're, we are taking a more conservative approach than, than these, these averages, just a little bit, just to be cautious. Here is a breakdown of the primary revenues for the General Fund. Sales and use tax, since 2014, has averaged about 5.4%. We're going, we're using an estimate of four, and you'll see that here on the, the next slide. Property tax has also averaged about eight. We have those limitations now, so we're going to, we're using a lower number than that as well. Here's our assumptions for the '26 through '2030 timeframe. Sales and use tax of 4% versus the, a little bit higher than five average from, since 2014. Property tax, very conservative, 3%, every other year, because that's, they assess every, every other year, and then expenditures at a 3%. So here's that, what that looks like in, in dollars. Got our 20, 2025 estimate there, and you'll see the overall growth rate of about 4%. And expenditures, again, overall growth, average growth, compounded average growth rate of about 2.8%. So forecasting out, we've got, here's resources and uses. You'll see over the '25 estimate, right along, in line with budget, and then as we go out, you'll see that, as the farther we go out, it's more uncertain, but we are anticipating having expenditures out face revenues slightly in the years of '27, '28, and beyond. Here's how your fund balance projects out. If we look out beyond, beyond this year, the dotted line there is the bottom of the range for your sliding and ratcheting. That's the 12%. The solid line there is the 16.6, which is the middle. So we are projecting that will drop below the 16% for a couple of years, and then we'll start rebuilding that fund balance back up toward that middle of the range as we get out to '2030 and beyond. All right, so next steps for the budget process. Like I mentioned, we'll be here next week talking about preliminary capital requests, and then we'll start into the meat of the budget process as we get toward the end of June. All right, so we'll open up to any questions that you might have.
Kevin, thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions for members of council? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. So on this, the, the ratcheting and sliding, why are we dropping down to 12% reserve when the economy is uncertain and we may need the rainy day fund?
So council has been very, very good at maintaining that 16.7% fund balance. Once again, projecting out longer than about a year is, is very uncertain at this time. These are very conservative estimates, but using those conservative estimates, we think that we will draw down closer to that 12%.
So, the 16.7% gives us three months' reserve. Is that correct?
Two months.
Two months? What does 12% give us?
Month and a half.
Okay, a month and a half. I've been thinking about this sliding and ratcheting here just recently, and the bottom line is, we have carried a huge unassigned fund balance. I don't know that I like this sliding and ratcheting. I think we should be using the unassigned fund balance when we have capital projects instead of building that money there, but I personally believe that this council ought to consider making sure we still have 16.7% in the reserve fund. I, I guess I never thought through the fact that, why should we ratchet and budget when we have a hefty unassigned fund balance? So we're dropping down to 12%. Are we also getting rid of the unassigned fund balance at the same time?
Yes. The projections are for this year, for unassigned fund balance to drop to zero.
And why is that?
Well, if you remember from the 2025 budget, we did request that council use some of the unassigned fund balance to cover the, for the 2025 budget. So that's, that's, and then you've spent, you've been able to transfer about $22 million to capital over the last few years. So that's, that's where that extra unassigned fund balance has gone to.
And I have not been opposed to spending the unassigned fund balance for capital projects, but using it to balance the budget, I do have a problem with that. Thank you for answering those questions.
Member Noonan Camp, did you have your light on or no? Member Ray, go ahead.
Thank you. So bear with me, please, on my questions. So at some point in 2025, we are not going to have an unrestricted fund, from what I'm looking at.
You still have your reserve, but you won't have unassigned fund balance.
Okay.
Which is on top of the, what currently we're projecting 16.4% reserve.
And if we go at the rate we're going now, 2026, we could potentially be at 14.1% of the rainy day fund reserve, emergency reserve. Now, in all budgeting that I've been taught and stuff like that, and everything you hear, and I'm going to bring it back to COVID, they said you need to have three months' reserve and everything, you're, you do. Why would the city be any different?
Well, it's a council decision on what, what, and as we go through the budget process, that'll certainly be something you guys can discuss and, and decide on at that point.
Okay. So can I ask you, as a finance person, and I wasn't around in 2020, you're the expert, is there a reason, in your opinion, and I'm asking for your opinion only, why we would want, as a city, to go below a three-month emergency reserve, especially going through COVID and everything else?
So having an unrestricted reserve helps you whenever there's, like, uncertain economic times like we have right now. We don't know if that's going to last a month or a year, and we don't know what the impacts of the tariffs will be, or even if the tariffs are going to happen. So it, it gives you flexibility, is what it does.
Okay. All right. I had a couple other questions, please. I'm, I'm... Can you tell me, please, what... Let me find the page. I was looking at some of our funds and that type of thing, and... I may need, my little Post-it fell. It had to do with, okay, let me go to the donor fund. Do any of these special reserve funds help pay salaries for any of our employees?
You mentioned the donors' fund. That does not.
Okay. And is there a reason that we keep so much money, like in the Conservation Trust Fund, there's over 2 million. The donor funds, there's over a million. Is there a reason why we're not spending down those monies?
So for the Conservation Trust Fund and the Open Space Fund, those are dedicated amounts that we collect, so they have to be spent on parks and recreation, those two particular ones. The donors' fund, a large amount, what's in there is police forfeiture funds, and those are restricted as well on what they can be spent on.
Okay. And then, there was one, it goes to home improvements and that type of thing, and... I'm looking for it. Housing rehabilitation fund. It's in Enterprise Fund 45-46. There, as of January 1st, there was four point, or 1.4 million in it. Is there a reason why? Let me ask you how that fund works?
So, yeah, in, in the, they don't, they aren't currently making loans from that fund, but they have in the past, and we still have a significant portfolio of outstanding loans. So that builds up as people pay interest, or if the house changes hands, then, then they repay, the loan is required to be repaid at that time.
Okay, so...
I think originally this, this city ceded that fund, some money, and now it's just been operating on its own.
Okay. I don't understand how it works, to be honest with you. I don't even know what it is.
We loan homeowners, if they need an emergency loan, or need a water heater, some, a roof or something like that, that's what we've loaned citizens money for in the past.
Okay, so it's not...
When they pay it back to us, some of them are 0% interest. They only pay it back when the house changes the hands. Some of them have very small interest rates on them.
Okay, so it's something that we're not actively using right now, or something that we may, you know, council may need to discuss in the future, because...
Mayor, if I could jump in?
Thank you.
Back in the '70s, actually, is when this was done, during, I think there was an economic downturn. And so throughout the years, the city was spending some of this money, and so, as Kevin correctly described, when we would help someone buy a house, or we would buy the house, then they would pay funds back to us. They would be making payments. When the house sold, we would get some money. That's still occurring, because the program, you know, lasted for a long time. This was, this is what we call Fund 46. We talked about it during the Affordable Housing Task Force discussion, and so it is a fairly well-capitalized fund still, because we haven't really had those large expenditures on housing that we, you know, had back in the day. However, our emergency grants that we give out for people for emergency services, we had someone a couple of years ago, I remember, whose toilet fell through the floor because it was rotten. Those are emergency repairs that are income-qualified, that we help people with, and so, yeah, that, that fund has a, has a hefty balance, but it is for, it is restricted, right, Kevin, for affordable housing purposes?
It is, yes.
Okay. So possibly council could look at utilizing, since it has such a large balance. Okay, thank you so much.
Member Ward.
I just wanted to speak a little bit to some of my colleagues' concerns about the level of cash that we have in reserve. The purpose of government is to collect and spend money for the benefit of the collective, and the purpose of the reserve is to ensure continuity of government when times are leaner than we expect. So the notion that we should stick a dragon egg full of cash in the bank and sit on it and never use it is not a correct way to manage the city, in my opinion. In 2018, when I was on the Budget Advisory Committee, we released a chart in our annual report that year, which tracked city revenues and expenditures for the previous 20 years. And the city has gone through, much like the economy, a series of peaks and valleys over the years. We've had tax collections and expenditures that sometimes went in opposite directions. However, the city has always had a fairly decent reserve position that we've held, and we've landed on this two-month number because we believe, and I think it was landed on by the Government Financial Accounting Officers Association recommendation, if I'm getting that name correctly, but two months would be enough not to, not for the city to survive with no income, because if the city ever had no income, we've got a lot bigger problems than how much money we have in the bank, but rather so that we could survive when we collected one or $2 million less than we anticipated, and we wouldn't have to start cutting and doing furlough days and ending programs that are popular in the city, but are arguably luxury programs. And I, I could name a few, but I'm not going to do that tonight. The bottom line is, we maintain a reserve currently at 16.7% because we believe that's adequate for us to survive when tax doesn't come in the way that it's, it's anticipated. And it's also adequate for us to survive a couple of seasons, possibly as many as two years, which I believe is the longest period of time of downturn I ever tracked in this 20-year cycle, with the same level of service that we're providing on a day-to-day basis to our citizens today, absent an added revenue stream or an additional tax on the, on the citizens. So the way I see it, yes, it can appear alarming on paper to see that reserve number go down, because it seems to indicate that the city's financial health is declining, but in actuality, it indicates that we've planned responsibly for, as Councilwoman Russell put it, a rainy day, in that we have an umbrella to keep us dry when the finances are a little slimmer than we expected.
Thank you, Member Ward. Go ahead, Member Prank.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I just have one quick question. I think it's a quick question. So in relation to an assumption that's made here for the General Fund, I'm trying to figure out, on the fiscal responsibility slide, it shows an average of 5.2 general fund expenditures and for the compound annual growth rate number from 2014 through 2024, and in the more recent years of 2019 through 2024, it has an 8.6 rate. So I'm just trying to figure out, with those two figures, how that relates to us then on the General Fund Summary Assumptions page, keeping our expenditure uses assumption at the 3%. Can you talk to me about how those two numbers interplay, and if they do, and if there's a good explanation as to why that 3% is so low, if we've seen a higher growth rate for expenditures in recent years?
I'm going to ask Budget Manager Nolan to, he's the wizard of the numbers.
I don't know if I'm a wizard or not. What we're anticipating with the 3%, as you can see with the Consumer, Consumer Price Index, we're anticipating a, like a 2.5, 2.7. Let me get to that slide. So I'm thinking our, for the Denver-Lakewood-Aurora level or area, we're looking to stay around that 3% growth rate, and so that, that's, that's kind of what, what my, my guide was. Where, the Federal Reserve, everybody is trying to... Where, um, the Federal Reserve, everybody is trying to bring down that, um, the, um, consumer price level. And that's, that's what, that's what our prices are based on when we're purchasing materials or cost, you know, cost of goods. So that's why I kind of, I, I left it at the 3%, just that average growth rate, still, still elevated above what, um, they're estimating 26, um, to be. I think, I've gotta try to find my, my slide. Oh, I think it's on the very back. Oh, here it is, sorry. So for 2025, um, the assumption, and this is from the Colorado Legislative Council Economic, um, Report. And so for 2025, the average is 2.3, they're estimating. It's probably gonna be higher than that. 2026 is at 2.6, and forecasting to, uh, 2027 is the 2.4. So I, I'm thinking our, our costs are gonna be higher, I just don't know how high. Um, so I, I kind of just landed at 3%. Kept, even kept our revenue, uh, projections at a lower rate than what, what it's been averaging as well. Just 'cause we're, we're just not sure, you know? We're, we're seeing, we're seeing a slowdown in, in, um, sales, sales, sales and use tax. But we just don't know how long, you know, we'll be leveling off, or, or if, if we go into a little bit of a dip or a decline.
So at some point in time, if we're not leveling off, then you all would be coming back to us and indicating, we're kind of not on track with our assumptions, and we need to shift gears?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, the, the assumptions right now are very preliminary, very high-level. Um, the economic landscape is, is changing daily, so...
Yeah.
We're, we're doing the best we can. But yes, we'll be coming, uh, to you with updated information throughout the budget cycle.
Yeah. And I just want to express my gratitude for all the work that you're doing on a daily basis, to keep ahead of all of this. So thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Jenny, I was gonna ask a similar question regarding, actually, the revenue aspect of it, because we were forecasting, or at least we were using 4% as the basis for 2026 and moving forward. But even this year, I think 2025, I think we only forecast revenue gains of, what, 1%?
Actually, we, we brought it down about 2% from the budgeted number. But I, I'm projecting about a 1.2% increase over 2024.
Okay.
Actuals. Um, but it's about a, a 2% reduction from the budgeted amount.
Okay. The other question I had is regarding the CPI. Do we, uh, how do we use the CPI numbers going, you know, throughout the entire budget cycle? Do we at all, or are we using base, basically the information that we have internally based on contracts and, um, uh, requests for proposals, that type of information to kind of dictate whether or not inflation is getting worse? Or things that we need to consider as part of the budget cycle for any future capital projects or expenditures?
Yes, uh, we, we are keeping in contact, um, with all the departments, especially Public Works, Utilities, South Platte Renew. They're, they're, as, as they're negotiating contracts with contractors, or as they're purchasing, um, fuel or, uh, materials, they're letting us know, um, what types of increases they're seeing year over year. And so we're, we're trying to average all that out. We, we don't really wanna, um, estimate too high or too low, but, uh, try to smooth that out over the, the next few years.
So the, the CPI is more just, it's just another data point for us.
It is.
But we wanna actually just use the information that we're gathering based off of things we're, you know, contracts we're putting out there.
Correct. And these, and when we've, uh, come to, come to you later on this year, we'll have an, another series of CPI numbers that, that will definitely have changed
Right.
from the, from these numbers that we're seeing in March so far.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions from members of council? Go ahead, Member Ray.
I just wanna thank you for the glossary in the back and definitions. That helped a lot, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I don't see any further questions. Jenny, Kevin, thank you very much for the presentation. Looking forward to continue the conversations in the months ahead on the budget, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we are ten minutes early, but, uh, I'm gonna ask the Inglewood High School students, as well as Ms. Schatz. Uh, I'm not sure if you have anything to say, but here to present information about their recent trip to Belm, Germany, our sister city. Hello, Serenity, Madden, Noah. Good to see you guys again, it's been a few weeks. I was good. Yeah. Yeah, it should be, uh...
Make sure everybody speaks into this.
Okay.
You know you're not winning us over with the chocolate, right? Madden, was this from your stash of candy that you brought back from Germany, or?
Nope.
I don't steal, I don't steal from children.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, you brought plenty back. I know, that's it, I, I brought pins.
Yeah, so we made sure that it was...
I brought pins, I brought chocolate, so we can already see who the favorites are.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Schatz, go ahead.
We made sure that there was, um, true German chocolate, and that the, um, little, um, colognes were made in Germany. So we wanted to come here to say thank you so much for allowing us to go. We had, I mean, to say we had a fabulous trip is just an understatement, and we wanted to kind of take you through what happened when we were there. And to start off, you picked the most fantastic group of students. Um, by the way, I'm Carla Schatz. I'm the journalism teacher, the media studies teacher at Inglewood High School, and I was so honored to go along on this trip because, I mean, if there were better stewards for Inglewood, you couldn't find them, because this group was amazing. They really showed what, um, you know, true community was like. Um, so the students embarked on the diplomacy visit to Belm and Denver Airport to Hanover, Germany. Then we took a short bus ride with the families to Belm. Belm's about an hour and a half-ish from the airport. So it was such a beautiful picturesque little town, and we hope that because they're the sister city, that you have a chance to just go and see. Um, it's not big city, it is small town, beautiful people, um, beautiful scenery. And they got a chance to just see so many things. They packed our schedule to the point where we were exhausted, happily exhausted by the end. So the first thing that we did when we got there was spend some time with the, their students, and who's going first?
Uh, I can go first.
Okay.
So we, so first of all, we spent, we spent our first day, we got to visit their school. So now their, their school's been a little different. It was very interesting, because they only had like three classes a day, and they were done by like 1:30 every day, which definitely was a very different shift from how we do it here. Uh, and so I got the, I got the experience to see that gym class there. They called it just sports. And we literally, we played dodgeball, it was pretty, it was pretty normal. It was very genori, pretty normal class. And then, uh, we got to, we got to eat lunch there, we got to hang out with these students. They were all amazing kids. It was a lot of fun to hang, to meet a lot of these students. There were, a lot of them were very excited to meet, to meet us, and we were very excited to meet them, obviously. Uh, it was just a very unique experience to be able to meet so many students from just a completely different country that like had just so many different customs and expectations than we were expecting. It was very interesting.
So Amsterdam? Who's doing Amsterdam? Go ahead.
Um, so we also embarked on a trip to Amsterdam, which is in the Netherlands. And I thought it was extremely beautiful there, like all the architecture, the buildings, and how like small the buildings were. Um, a fun fact, um, with like the buildings, if they're really thin, they pay less taxes for the houses. Um, and then at the same time, people could also live in, uh, boats on like the little river. And I thought it was super amazing, uh, 'cause it's different and unique from America. Um, and overall, it was just like really pretty going on the boat and seeing different, like scenery. It's far different from here, um, just seeing how there was a lot of people on bikes and just outside in nature, and not just in cars all the time. It was a extremely healthy environment. It was like clean and super green, and I just thought Amsterdam was really pretty. And it was just so amazing to get to explore the city.
The Anne Frank House, did you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Uh, yeah, I can talk about the Anne Frank House a little bit. So that was, that was a very unique experience, not a whole lot of people get to experience that. It's very, it's booked up very quickly. That was, it was truly, truly incredible sight. Uh, to be able to go through the secret annex and just be able to see how they, what they experienced. Very, it was very somber, very, but truly a unique experience to be able to see their darkened, darkened windows and to see, like, the actual amount of space that they had. 'Cause they did actually have a decent amount of space up there, surprisingly enough to me. But, uh, like, to think about having to go through there so quietly, like trying not to make a single sound with your footsteps, just, or with your speech, it was just, it was truly... It was hard to take.
So I'd like to talk about Hanover. It was probably the place, aside from Cologne, of course, that I found the most, like, beautiful and interesting to learn about. There we visited both the City Hall and the Parliament. So it's interesting to see their City Hall. It is this massive extravagant building that was built quite some time ago. It was there in 1939 before the war. On the inside, we got to see, um, four different diagrams that were, um, 3D. The first one was in the early 1600s, showing what it was like to develop back then. Then it continued on to the 1930s before the war, looked beautiful, extravagant. And then following the war in 1945, it was all gray, and you could see many destroyed buildings. It's remarkable that the City Hall survived even just because of its size, that it did not get destroyed. And I think it's very interesting to learn that. Um, and then the fourth one was present day. That was very interesting to see. Following that, we went to lunch at a German restaurant. I believe a lot of us got the schnitzel, which is probably one of the most iconic German dishes that is known. Um, and then we went to the Parliament. It was very interesting. So this was the Lower Saxony Parliament. And they have a similar parliamentary system to our congressional system here. However, it's less bipartisan there. There is multiple different parties who control, in this case, they have 146 members sitting, and they had four different parties, uh, and they form coalition, coalitions between the parties. And so we have the red and green on the diagram that you can see. They are in a coalition, and then you have the, have the black and the blue on the diagram as well. There's also a very small spot that is gray. That is a single parliamentary member who left his party because of a financial disagreement. And he still sticks with the party's ideals and votes more towards them, just not a part of them financially. It was very interesting to see how different it was from here.
All right, so I'm gonna be talking about, uh, Cologne. It was a really beautiful, like, city in Germany, and it's something that I've been wanting to go to since I was in elementary school. So being able to go and actually see the city, and then on top of that, seeing the cathedral, it was just mesmerizing and like awe-inspiring. And I kind of wrote in my perspective of how I felt. So the moment I stepped into Cologne, it felt like something out of a dream. Like I had walked straight into a painting, but somehow it was real. The city buzzed with life, yet had this calm, old soul about it, cobblestone streets. Every time that I would walk, it felt like the cobblestone was like telling a story at the bottom of my feet. Wandering through the city, I did soak in the colors and the culture and the scent of, like, fresh food, like, throughout the air. One of the sweetest highlights, literally, was the chocolate museum. It felt like we were kids again, eyes wide, watching the chocolate flow through the mountain, like, the fountains. And I might have eaten a little too much, but honestly, I have no regrets. Um, but nothing, nothing prepared me for the cathedral. There it stood when I walked out of the train, like, the train station, the Cologne Cathedral towering and awe-striking, like it had been carved by an, angels rather than human hands. It was the sheer size that made me feel so small, yet somehow, somehow it deeply connected to something bigger. And getting a little personal, as a Christian, it was, it wasn't just a building, it was like a holy experience. My breath caught in my throat just staring up at it. It was just a really awe-inspiring moment for me. And like every stone, every stained glass window told stories of faith, of devotion, and of worship that echoed throughout the church because of how many people would go and be at the altars and be down there. And just all this spirit flowed through the cathedral, and it was just wonderful, it was super pretty. And a fun fact that I learned about the cathedral was that, um, during World War II, it was one of the, um, standing buildings out of the entire war, even though, um, the enemies would like bomb the place, but it was still strongly standing.
This is Willow, by the way. Hi, I'm Willow. And going to the Germany trip was very eye-opening for me. I have family relations to Germany, but mostly I love the architecture, and I love learning different cultures. This trip really provided that for me, and I think one of the biggest moments of that was definitely meeting the students and also Amsterdam, since that was completely another country outside of Germany itself. While we saw the wonderful countryside of Belm and the city of Osterbroek, Amsterdam showed us a lot of east, of European culture and ar- architecture that we didn't get to see much of in the countryside of Belm. So it really opened up my eyes to see how different our worlds are. And to that, I'm, uh, inspired. It's amazing to see how different our worlds are and to learn that and accept it, and wonder if, if our worlds could come together. And Amsterdam for me was the best part of the trip. It showed history, it showed vibrancy, and it showed life that you don't typically see in America. For me, Amsterdam was the keystone of this trip. Once I heard we were going to Amsterdam, I was always excited for it. And it's never something you can experience in photos. It's always something you have to see for yourself, just like cu- culture of other countries.
All right. So, um, I think I'll wrap this up by talking about, um, the reflections that the students had. You know that this was a very amazing experience for them. The amount of time that they got to interact with the students, they're adults, the, the leadership of the country, um, the province that we were in, it really opened their eyes to something they would have never had a chance to experience any other way. The exploration and the interactions that will never be met again. So we just wanted to say thank you. Um, the students returned home, they've already started planning for the German students to come here and have some ideas on what that's gonna look like. So we're forever grateful for allowing us to go, and just wanted to, you know, say as a group, thank you very much.
Ms. Schatz, Noah, uh, Madden, Willow, Serenity. Um, it was a pleasure to do this trip with you guys. I, I think one of my favorite aspects of this was the fact that this was your first European trip, and just the way you soaked it all in, the fact that you guys tried to learn as much German as possible, uh, but also the way that you kind of built a relationship with your, with your students, with the, actually with your host family. So that's one thing, actually, I didn't hear you speak of, and I'm hoping that you guys can touch on that. But what was it like to live with the host family for a week away from us? And, you know, basically just having to, uh, live with the host family in a language that is, you know, is not something that you understand, but obviously they do speak some English. But how was that experience for you, staying with the host family for that week?
So I'm gonna jump in here for just a second, just for the people that didn't go. High school in Germany is so much different. They were partnered with 12 and 13-year-olds because once, so the way that I've been explaining it to everybody, if there's 10 students that are in high school, six of them will realize that they are destined for something other than a four-year college. The other four will go to Gymnasium, which is like upper-level high school. So they weren't matched with 16, 17-year-olds. So kudos to them for not going crazy with middle schoolers, but I'll let them go from now. There's some extra stuff on the slides for you guys. There you go.
It was really interesting to live with the host family and to not really speak their language, but to interact with them and... but to interact with them and have them interact with you in English. Um, I'd say one of the most impressive things was that they did speak such good English, considering a lot of Americans don't speak a second language at all. And you don't see it really common in households, but even in the households, like when I was upstairs or like doing something else around the house, I would hear them speaking to each other in English and it would be really interesting to see, cause that's how they learn it. Is they speak to each other in it in their own households, so they're all learning it together. Um, one of their classes is also English. I did not have that class. I don't know if any of you guys did. Um, but I was able to experience classes that I have had. So I had chemistry, gym, art. It was really interesting to see how it differs from ours. I was doing some chemistry that I had just learned the previous year. And so I remembered it all and it was easy to me. But to them, they're learning a lot of this for the first time, so it was interesting to see. They didn't really speak it co- speak English commonly in their classrooms, um, of course, except for English. But they did speak it a lot to each other, even out in the courtyard and what would be the equivalent to our playgrounds.
Yeah, I'm gonna jump in here a little bit on that too. It was just, it was so interesting to be able to meet, to be able to see how these families live and how similar and different it was to our experience here as well. Uh, I'm gonna be honest, I was a little awkward the whole time, I will say. Uh, but they were so welcoming. They were so excited to have me stay there. I like, uh, I, I definitely kicked my student out of his room. I was definitely staying in his room. I feel bad about that, but oh, well. Uh, but yeah, they were so welcoming. They were very excited to see us all. Uh, he, so I stayed with Kiel there, the second from the left. He, uh, uh, he was very excited. Uh, he really tried to speak as much English as he possibly could. Uh, they definitely were still learning, like they, they didn't always have every word accurate. And I was just, it was, uh, and they definitely had to translate a lot as well, using their phones and stuff. And I had to as well. I obviously don't know very much German. But it was ve- it was, it was amazing to see how much English that they actually spoke and that, uh, that they were able to interact with us so well. Uh, it was kind of interesting. They did, they did, randomly they would break into German wi- with each other. And it was, it was just kind of funny, cause all of a sudden I can't, I can't tell a word you're saying. Just have to hope you're not talking about me.
Alright, so I'll talk about my host family. My host family was wonderful. My, uh, German student and, uh, her father, they didn't speak very good English. And it was totally understandable, but I really appreciated the fact that they gave their best to try to actually have conversations with me in English. And I remember the first time we got there, I was having dinner with everyone, including the mom as well. Um, and I remember that they were just talking all in German. And so the mom would literally get upset and she would be like, oh, remember guys to speak English. Um, or try your best to speak English. So it was just super funny getting to see that, um, the mom was just saying, oh, speak English, speak English. And I was trying my best to learn German as well. Um, and I learned fairly enough because I would just like talk to them in English. And the German dad, who'd, he would tell me like, oh, you should probably like try having conversations in German. Uh, and so they were teaching me some German here and there. So the second to last day, I actually held a decent conversation with them in German. And it was really interesting and it was super fun. And I really got to appreciate mainly the German mom, because every time she would come home, she would just always talk to me while everyone would just go in their rooms. It was just me and her and I really liked connecting with her. Uh, and she would just have like conversations and she brought me to her stable with like all the horses and stuff. And I really appreciated that because it was my first time going and actually seeing a horse up close. And she let me ride on the horse as well. And so I really appreciated this host family. They're just extremely opening to me. They're really welcoming. And just overall, I really appreciate the German host mom, cause she was just, she was just so bright and her English was really good. And she just was taking the time to understand me. And then she would also tell me more facts about, um, Nala, which was my German student. Because she didn't really open up too much to me and that was perfectly fine. But I learned plenty enough from her mom and overall, I just really loved my host family.
Uh, I'll say the same as everyone else. The families were extremely welcoming. My host mom and host father were very welcoming. They played games, they included me in conversations. And they would remind, uh, Mia, my host student, to talk in English, so I'd feel included. But one thing that really stuck out to me was how much of human experience transcends language. I don't know a lot of Germans, so when they were speaking German, I was quite lost. But I do remember there was this one conversation between Mia and her mom that I could understand despite not, not knowing at all what they were saying. Because our, our situations are so similar. You're a teenager, you're gonna have spats with your mom and argue cause you think you know better. And that to me was interesting and also very appealing because you think that they're going to be so proper and, you know, polite. Because it's this host student, you're going to be kind. But they're also going to be human and they're gonna be families, which to me was really nice and really welcoming to the most. I didn't have to be extremely perfect. I could still be me because they were still them. And that was really wonderful for me.
Alright, any questions for members of council for our students?
Tina, your daughter didn't win, but she did really well. I'm in the middle of the te-
Side of conversation.
I'm in the middle of a tennis match at Inglewood High School, so.
So I, I guess, oh, go ahead, uh, Member Neekep.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you so much for going and representing the city of Inglewood to our sister city. It was wonderful to hear your experiences. So glad that you had this opportunity, that you were able to represent our entire community on our behalf. Um, and thank you so much for coming to share about it and thank you for the gifts.
Hmm, thank you.
Um, well, obviously the, the goal here is since we did sign an agreement, a partnership agreement with, with Belm, you know, next year they're gonna bring out a delegation. And then the, you know, and then the year after that, we plan on taking, you know, another set of students to, to Belm. Is there any lessons learned, anything that we should be considering for the next time we decide to go out to Belm? Was it too short? Should it be an increased timeline? Um, what, what stood out about the trip that we potentially need to make changes? You know, two years from now, or things that we need to consider for next year when they come out to us, but?
I'll do the big one. We flew in too far away. I think they, we didn't know where to fly in. They said that there was an airport like twenty minutes away. So some of those little logistical things. But the families were fantastic. I stayed with the teacher and her husband and ten-year-old. And, um, I changed, exchanged, um, lesson plans. They don't teach media literacy. I do. So I left yearbook lessons, media literacy, all sorts of stuff there. Um, I think that we were pretty tired, but I don't think that we would have wanted it any other way. And I'll let them speak.
I would like to have a more, I'd say solidified plan earlier on, cause I feel we were mostly informed of the entirety of it. I obviously was not at the first meeting. Um, I was busy that evening with a track meet, I believe. Um, however, I think it would be good to have like a daily plan or like a plan of what the days are gonna look like earlier on. Cause I feel like we got that about the last week of, uh, like the last week before we left.
Alright, so what I have to say is I, I feel like that we had like a really short time and we got to like only see like minimal stuff. And I feel like in Germany, there's so many cities to see. And just in the short amount of time that we had, it just felt extremely rushed. But other than that, I was, I'm still extremely grateful for being able to go on this trip. But I felt like it should be just a little bit longer, like two weeks, because it, you could just see a lot more. And what me and my host family talked about is we didn't have enough free time to get to actually interact with the host family, unless it was night and everyone's coming home. So I felt like, uh, it could have been a decently amount, like longer to see more stuff and being able to actually have that one-on-one time with the host families.
Uh, I would agree with that a little bit. Just, uh, honestly, I would have loved to, to have been to that school a bit longer. I didn't fe- I, I really didn't see some of the, some of the classes I really wanted to see. I really wanted to see their German, like English classes. It was unfortunate I kind of missed out on those. I would have loved to have spent like maybe a couple more days in the school with them and kind of get to, uh, understand, uh, how they're kind of, how that worked there as well.
Overall, the trip was well planned out, but one thing I noticed that was lacking in strength was the communication between students and teachers. We did have a group chat with our parents, our host students and each other and Ms. Schatz. But I tried to contact other students through the group chat multiple times. And sometimes I would get ignored for twenty or thirty minutes when there was information I desperately needed to know. I think next time, there should be established check-in times. You just text, hey, I'm here or whatever. And so that way no one's lost or confused, because there was multiple times I could have used better communication and it just wasn't provided.
Cool. Anything else? Go ahead, Member Prank.
Thank you. Um, thank you for going and representing us so well. Clearly I can see why you were chosen to go. You all seem very curious and so articulate. Um, what a wonderful experience for you. I just have a quick question for each of you, just off the top of your head. With the delegation coming here, what would you recommend we plan into their visit here that represents Inglewood to you, to each one of you? I don't want the adults to just plan this. I want the kids. I want to hear what, what the Inglewood experience is to you and what we should be showing them.
I would say if it would be possible to get them out around a time where there is many games going on at the school, cause that is a, what I would call a uniquely Colorado and uniquely American experience, is seeing high school sports in action and seeing how they work. Um, I also think that it would be a good idea to bring them to some of our sites. So, um, bring them here, obviously. This would be interesting for them to see, cause it's different from what they would experience as city hall. Um, as well as a trip to maybe the state capital to see the difference of how it would be from what their state capitals are. Cause when we went to Hanover, their state capital was kind of a boxy government building like you would see likely here with like governmental agencies, as opposed to like a grandiose capital similar to ours.
Cool. Go ahead, Willow.
One thing uniquely Inglewood is its community. The first thing I noticed upon moving here was how involved Inglewood is with its community. There's block parties in the summer, neighborhood nights, even the block party festival that happened at the end of the summer, just this past October, August, which is uniquely Inglewood. My old town never had anything like that. And those events that show the community, that bring the community together are special and show us what Inglewood is. That's what I think.
Perfect. So just real quick, did you guys get to see much of Belm outside of just the little neighborhood that you, that you lived? Okay. So I, I think just one of the cool things, just, just for members of council and members of the audience, but the cool thing, there's, there's a ton of history in Belm. So on the Friday, cause you guys were at the school on the last day, the Friday that we were there, I took a trip to go see a Roman war site. Apparently there was a, there was, now, just outside of Belm and next to Osnabruck, in between the two cities, was the site of a major Roman battle in nine A.D. Nine, nine A.D. And so that was really cool. I got, you know, um, the, the speaker that was kind of giving me the tour did not provide me as much information as she should have to talk about the actual significance of that event. It was a major battle that basically pushed back the Roman forces from Germany after that defeat. So that was really cool. It's also, you know, the, the fact that it was a major British base right after World War Two, up until the wall falling. And so a lot of the buildings that are there, that they have been repurposed for the, for the need of refugees and migrants. And they're, they're now going through a little build, building boom as well. So like those type of things were really, really interesting in terms of just learning a little bit more about Belm. So it's a really cool city. The, the other aspect that I want to say is that, you know, they've had delegations, even after two thousand and seven is when they signed the agreement here. They had people come to Inglewood in the years following for that. And they actually, you know, if anybody's in Germany, they extended the, uh, they extended their hand to come and visit Belm at any point. And they'll, they'll give you a tour of the city. Um, you'll, you'll meet with the city official, that type of thing. They would love to have people from Inglewood visit Belm, so. And I guess lastly, again, you guys were fantastic. You, you, you guys represented us well. You took an interest in the, uh, in the trip, in the city, in the culture. Every aspect of it, you guys did a fantastic job. You represented us well. So thank you very much. It was a pleasure to hang out with you guys and, and have you guys experience your first, you know, major trip to Europe. So thank you so much, guys. So, and Ms. Schatz, thank you very much. They put you to work, so. Yeah, they put you to work and you provided a lot of information. You were fantastic, Ms. Schatz. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much to the delegation to the high school. And with that, everyone, let's take a quick couple minute break and then we'll come back and start the meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you, everyone. Members of council, if you could please be seated. Mine, do they have anything?
Oh, so it's just chocolate.
Do you want to trade or do you have a preference?
Oh, I don't care.
Okay.
This is orange. Do you like it, Rich?
Alright, members of the public, I call this meeting to order. I'm actually gonna use it. Alright, everyone.
Oh, I should have stayed tuned.
Yeah, well. Good evening, everyone. Sorry about that. That's the first time I had to use the gavel. So I call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, if you could please take roll call.
Yes, good evening. Mayor Protem Anderson.
Present.
Member Noonan Camp.
Present.
Member Prang.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
Member Wright.
Present.
Mayor Sierra.
Present.
All seven present.
All right. Uh, before we get to Agenda Item Five, just, just for members of the public, at the request of the applicant, in case anybody is here for this, the public hearing, uh, that was scheduled for the, it's actually not on here anymore, but it was for the yeah, it was ten A, but yeah, the public hearing has been canceled or postponed, I guess I should say at this point. So there will be no public hearing tonight. So if anybody's here for the public hearing, it won't be heard tonight. Uh, moving on to Agenda Item Five, this is the minutes from the regular City Council meeting on March seventeenth. Any changes to the minutes from the meeting of the seventeenth? All right, C. None. Can I get a motion to approve, uh, the minutes from the March seventeenth meeting?
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Prang.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to recognition. First, we'll start off with the recognition of the Affordable Housing Task Force. Uh, so City Council would like to recognize the members of the Affordable Housing Task Force. The task force included members of the Inglewood community and affordable, affordable housing professionals who were appointed by the City Council and met for twelve consecutive months. The group heard from a variety of affordable housing experts, including representatives of other communities and housing, and affordable housing providers concerning the opportunities and challenges that are associated with the current housing market in the front range. The task force spent many hours developing a shared understanding of the best practices associated with the preservation and development of affordable housing prior to embarking on an effort to craft a final report and recommendation. Given the daunting scope of that issue and in order to formulate an effective report, the task force formed subcommittees to address affordable housing recommendations based on the following categories: build, assist and preserve, and fund. A comprehensive report and series of recommendations were drafted by the subcommittees. They were synthesized by the entire task force and were presented to the City Council in January of this year. City Council would like to thank the members of the task force for the contribution of their time, energy, passion, and expertise in taking on this challenge and for providing a series of specific recommendations that could guide Inglewood's housing and affordable efforts well into the future. So, uh, I think, do we want to say the names as they come up for the, uh, the applicants or for the, um,
I can read the names if you'd like.
The certificates. Perfect. And I'll come up and shake hands with each of the members. So, thank you.
Excellent. All right. Jake Gilbert. Samantha Hurst. Sophia King. Erin Martinez. Joseph Phillips. Diane Reinhardt. Amber Reyes. Sherry Stinson. Hugo Weinberger. Corey Whitaker. Kevin Wright. Stevie Yates. That's it?
All right, everyone, we're moving on to recognition, the Inglewood High School Sister Cities delegation uh, and the students that you just heard from, um, that took their trip to Belm, Germany. So the city would like to recognize the Inglewood High School Sister Cities delegation for their trip to Belm, Germany in March. Inglewood and, uh, Belm were paired in two thousand and five, but I think we signed the contract or we signed the agreement in two thousand and six. Uh, but the relationship between the two cities has been largely dormant since two thousand and fourteen. Uh, last month, this relationship was revitalized when students from Inglewood High School, uh, Ms. Schatz, the Inglewood teacher of the Journalism School, and I traveled to Belm. During the trip, the students participated in educational exchanges with Belm students, including attending German schools, met with the regional elected leaders, and experienced the food, art, culture, architecture, and the people of Germany. Um, did a fan, the, the, the students were just fantastic, representatives of Inglewood. Um, but also just of the entire community. Their participation, enthusiasm, openness to new people and cultures helped make the Sister City visit a success. So I want to thank, um, all the students from the Inglewood High School Sister Cities delegation for representing Inglewood and strengthening our bond with Belm. So thank you to Madden, Noah, Dylan, Ray, Willow, and Serenity. So I think we want, well, first, let's just, a round of applause for the students. And I'm, and I think you guys may, are they still here? Oh, okay, perfect. If you wouldn't mind just taking a quick picture up with the members of City Council. Uh, so yeah, if you're able to come up, we'll take a quick picture. Thank you. All right, everyone, let me just make sure I got all the sheets here. We're going to be moving on to public comment now. All right. Just make sure. There we are. All right, so the, we're moving on to public comments. So this is an opportunity to address City Council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. And please limit your presentation to three minutes. Uh, we do have quite a list tonight, so, um, you know, if you have addressed council in the last ninety days, you would be moved to the bottom of the list. Audio and visual materials must be submitted to City Clerk by five P.M. on the Thursday prior to the meeting. And, uh, public comment is limited to ninety minutes tonight. We have about six pages worth of comments, so we may hit that limit tonight. So City Clerk, if you want to make sure that you're taking time for that as well. Um, so I will start with the first name on the top of the list and move down. And so we got Eric Better Lucy, Better Lucci. Is he here tonight? I thought I saw him, but. Eric, is he here? No, I don't see Eric, so we'll move on to the next speaker. Uh, we got Rick M. Hines. And I believe you're a D-four resident, if I remember correctly. So Rick, you have your three minutes. I'm sorry. There, there should be a star on the microphone and that should make it green.
With the big arrows?
Yep, you're good. So when you begin to speak, we'll start your three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to thank each of you, as I usually do, for the service that you do to this, uh, community. It's, uh, it's a lot of work. I know it is. I'm here tonight to express my concern regarding the pending ballot measure to restructure how voting for the mayor will occur in November. Last November, the voters of this city overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly made their desire known to have an elected mayor for Inglewood. In the absence of specific wording on how this election would be held, this, that, how the assumption is that the plurality method would be used as it has been in the past and would be used when counting voted, votes. I'm certain if you polled those voters, they would assume it should be done just as every other election had been held for City Council positions. The effort on the part of, of certain council members to undermine the voters' understanding of how this election will be held is wrong. While I believe that other types of election are an important consideration, they should not affect how this election will be conducted. After having attended the recent council, council study session, I'm also concerned that certain members of council have moved in, had an agenda which was not discussed at the study session, namely, holding a special election which could cost the citizens of this city eighty-five thousand dollars. While it was brought up, it was not a conclusion that was drawn at the end of that discussion. After, um, the mayor's specific words were regarding the next steps were, quote, "I will bring it back up during mayor's choice on May seventh." My understanding of bringing it back up indicates that there would be further discussion of the options, not a vote to move forward with this expensive election. After reviewing the pending special election wording, two issues stood out to me. First, there appears to be no consideration of an option whereby citizens could elect no change to the election style, namely, keeping the plurality process. Whether an accidental omission or a purposeful one, this shows evidence of manipulating the election process toward a narrowed, possibly desired outcome on the part of some members of council. The second one is legal. According to Rule twenty-six point two of the Colorado Secretary of State Elections rules, should either Option One A or Option Two succeed and ranked, the choice voting initiated, the city would not have enough time to notify the county clerk of running a ranked choice election per state rules. Quote, "A local election conducting a ranked choice voting election that is coordinated with the county clerk must give notice to the county clerk no more, no later than one hundred days before the election." With the projected special election occurring on August fifth, that's only ninety-one days prior to the November election. You can't give a hundred-day prior notice to something that only might happen and is not on, a part of our Home Rule Charter.
Mr. M. Hines, thank you very much. You have three minutes. I know, there was a lot there. So thank you very much for your time. Member Wright, you have a question?
Yeah, I just need to clarify something. When you were speaking, you said May seventh meeting. Did you mean April seventh meeting?
Uh, probably did, yes.
Okay, thank you.
April seventh.
Thank you so much.
Mr. M. Hines, no further questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Up next is, uh, it's Jan Whitebird, uh, also a D-four resident. Ms. Whitebird, good evening. Uh, when you are ready to speak, you may begin.
Jan Whitebird, Federal in Bellevue. I read a quote today by C. Davis. "Colorado is rapidly becoming one of the nation's most progressive states. And by progressive, I mean radically opposed to God, family, life, marriage, and aggressively hostile to anyone who holds historic conservative beliefs on issues. Welcome to the modern left. This ain't your granddaddy's Democrat Party. Our Fab Four, Chelsea, Steve, Joe, and Othaniel are continuing to fashion Inglewood in a way to usher us into one-world government communism. UniteAmerica.org, where Chelsea works, she's head of strategy and operations. They say they're trying to infr- to franchise voters, but I think it's the opposite. Strategy, strategy means manipulation. You're trying to strategize a way to get to a certain end of things. And yet, this is despite voices from the community speaking up as a majority. Chelsea continues to vote against my fellow Inglewoods at every chance, along with Steve, Joe, and Daniel, Da- um, Othaniel, sorry. They're after power, control, ego. They're manipulators. My beliefs, belief is at least eighty percent of us want the same things. We are being manipulated by falsehoods, lies, and propaganda. The Fab Four spoke out loudly about recalls costing way too much money. Yet here they are, trying to put through a system in place that would likely cause multiple elections every election cycle. Estimates are eighty-five to one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and they're trying to do this right now for this year with a special election to go forward. They want to move away from one person, one vote. I ran to be on the election committee knowing they would never put me in. My platform was save money, investigate free and fair elections, fully explore the RCV options, support the clerk and recorder. They didn't fully support the ranked choice options. They looked at one side of it. I wonder where those speakers came from, Chelsea. There was a great article. It talked about definitions. Do our council members know and understand these terms: plurality, majority vote, four data types to explain categorical, ordinal, interval, and ratio, important if you're talking about elections? There is a way to save money. It's called paper ballot hand count. Ranked choice voting is not auditable. Stay away from it, please. Thank you.
Ms. Whitebird, thanks for your time. Any questions for members of council? C. None, thank you for your time tonight, Ms. Whitebird. Uh, up next is Shannon Sturgeon, here to speak about issues with the city. It's also a D-one resident. Hello, Shannon. When you are ready to speak, you may begin.
Yeah, so you should have got the package that I dropped off to all of you today, including the city manager, about the year-plus problems that I've been having with the police department, harassment, my neighbor ripping up my fence, building a retaining wall on my property, da-dee-da-dee-da. Still, a year goes by and this thing is continuing. That the fencing company that she hired to take care of the notice of violation lied. The community development people aren't doing anything about it. I've sent multiple emails to all of you. And, you know, it's just frustrating that I've done nothing wrong. I call the police because my neighbor trespasses on my property. I get harassed. I get threatened with all different kinds of charges. I show you guys that I own the fence, then Officer Lewis threatens me with up-to-felony charges for doing things to my fence when my neighbor rips up my fence. And I can't do anything about the retaining wall that's on my property. She has to take care of it. It's a continuation of being ignored. Trying to hold you guys accountable, which is why I'm here. Do something about it. Why can community development do seven different permits? And the last permit that I agreed to is not upheld. The retaining wall was not supposed to be built again. It says in the documents that I provided that the company was not going to build the retaining wall. Yes, it was. There's a big, huge gap now in my fence that I have to block up because they said, also in this document, that there wouldn't be a gap. It's frustrating. Over a year, nothing is being done to help me. I have done nothing wrong. My neighbor is the one that did all of this stuff to me. The police are the ones that harass me when I call them to keep them off my property. I've been deceived by community development by seven different permits and that they won't hold up to the last permit that I agreed to. Come on, do your job. I'm here to hold you accountable.
Ms. Sturgeon, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for Ms. Sturgeon? C. None, thank you for your time tonight. C. None. Thank you for your time tonight. Up next is Narita, and I can't read the last name, so apologies.
Frankman.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Frankman.
Frankman.
Formerly Hathaway, formerly city council member from 1988 to 1997, at which time we were already discussing direct election of mayor way back then. I'm happy to say that we finally got it through. However, your proposals to change the way we actually do elections here in Inglewood is actually an insult to my intelligence and the intelligence of every voter in this city. How hard is it to put something on the ballot that says mayor and the two people or three people who ever end up running for it? Why do you need anything, a special election that's going to cost money, for a simple thing that we've been doing for years? You know, it was a very simple ballot proposal that says, yes, we're going to directly elect the mayor. Hey, it's real hard to put that on the ballot, you know, rather than city council number one or District One, mayor. Mm-hmm. So, I would just like you to reconsider that fact. And, you know, I agree with the previous speaker that ranked choice voting is a wave of the future. However, municipal elections, it really doesn't work well because you guys are supposed to be nonpartisan. Ranked choice voting really works much better when you've got Democrats, Republicans, independents, and whatever else. When you don't have any designation, which you guys have never had, at least officially, let's put it that way, I think it's, you know, like I said, it's an insult to my intelligence and it's an insult to the intelligence of the voters of this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, Ms. Breckerman. Any questions? C. None. Thanks for your time tonight. Up next is, no clapping, please, members of the public. There will be no clapping or no additional applause. If it does happen again, I will be asking you to leave. So, up next is Bill Ranshaw, here to speak about the EDDA.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, my name is Bill Ranshaw. I'm with Snyder Building Construction. We are a commercial contractor just up off Sherman and Broadway. And hopefully change the tone here a little bit, and I appreciate the voices that are speaking up on that matter. But I'm actually here tonight in support of the EDDA South Broadway Design Guidelines, and not just on behalf of Snyder as a contractor who, you know, we closely work with types of, you know, investors and clients that use guidelines that the Broadway, the EDDA has presented, but also someone who personally spends a great deal of time in this area. I actually grew up here in the 70s in Inglewood. And at Snyder, many of our clients are local developers and restaurateurs and small businesses, and they're specifically looking for cities that take this kind of initiative, cities that are thoughtful, intentional, and willing to invest in creating a strong sense of place. The guidelines that are presented by the EDDA are, they're not intrusive from what I've seen from other cities. They're very flexible. They provide helpful direction without limiting creativity. They make it easier to plan, easier to design, and ultimately easier to invest in Inglewood. Importantly, they also avoid the kinds of costly mandates that we do see in other municipalities that we work. Municipalities that can delay or even derail a project such as forced infrastructure upgrades, replacing city water mains, meeting extensive energy code requirements like mandatory solar installations, those are a lot of things that we see in some guidelines. These type of guidelines can sometimes significantly increase the cost and timeline of a project and from what I've witnessed with the EDDA has presented. I haven't seen anything like that. It's very flexible for businesses coming in. We've seen how thoughtful the design guidelines have helped shape thriving downtowns in cities like Golden, Arvada, and Littleton. We're currently working over off of Tennesse and 40th that have, you know, minor guidelines in thriving areas. I strongly encourage everyone here to support these guidelines and the future that they represent for South Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ranshaw, for your, for coming tonight. Any questions? Real quick, Mr. Ranshaw, your business is in District One, but do you also reside in Inglewood?
No, I actually, I live in, unincorporated, I'm like Bellevue and Sims.
Okay.
But I represent our company that's right there.
All right.
I can leave this.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind just leaving with the city clerk. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Up next is Kathy Naughton, District Four, with no topic given. Good evening, Ms. Naughton. When you're ready to speak, you may begin.
Something is fishy here in Inglewood, and it's not just the Platte River running through our city. I noticed some very wealthy cities like Aspen changed their voting to ranked choice voting. They abandoned the system after three years. I would like to point out that one of the wealthiest cities in the United States can afford to make that mistake. Can we afford to make the same mistake? In a time when the economy is struggling, why are we asking Inglewood's citizens to bear this financial burden? An election, as we've always done, would be sent from Arapahoe County with the general election ballot and would be a fraction of the cost. The top candidate with the most votes would win. Why not that? Will that option be placed on the special election ballot you are proposing so citizens can weigh the choices? So, if you push this confusing special election through, I was wondering if I could borrow your signs from the recall a few years back to let the public know how much these special elections will cost and to make them aware that this will be status quo in the future.
Ms. Naughton, thank you very much for your time. Any questions for Ms. Naughton? C. None. Thank you for coming tonight. Up next is Sandy Kettlehut, and I believe is a District Two resident. Good evening, Sandy. When you're ready to speak, you may begin.
Good evening, council and mayor. I want to address the ordinance that is to be discussed in Mayor's Choice 12A2. We do not need to change the way we vote for a member of council. This ordinance seems to address only the needs of the council members that are afraid they will not win if we run the election, as we always have for any council position in the past with a plurality. Are some of you afraid you might lose your power to someone like Kim, for example? Of the last five mayors, Jim Woodward was the only mayor elected by the entire city, as he was an at-large candidate. Every other selected mayor was voted into office as a district representative, which means that all but one of our mayors have received votes by only 25% of the city. I am sure that a plurality of votes will result in more than 25%. All council members should be voted on by the same rules. Why do we need to change the way we vote now? Are you afraid of losing? Remember back in 2023 when we attempted to recall a few of you? Your flyers emphasized the high cost. See Chelsea's, she had what the cost was on there, as well as many of the rest of you. Your flyers emphasized the high cost of the special election at $137,700 and how it could fund a police officer for a year. If an ordinance were to pass on August 5th, there is a possibility of a runoff election after the general election. Then, if a council member were to win, we could possibly have a third special election to replace the council person's position if the remaining six members could not agree on a replacement. Remember, the five out of six of you must agree, and I don't see that happening. So, basically, you want an election on August 5th to change how we vote in November. Then, we would probably need a runoff election after the general election, followed by a third election for a replacement candidate if a council member were to become mayor. So, at the 2023 rate, that would be $413,100. This in addition to the cost of the general election. Can we really afford to waste this much money, since most of you were against spending money on a special election in 2023? Having more police officers would be a much better use of the citizens' money. Instead of throwing it away on these special elections, we might even get three police officers.
Thank you, Ms. Kettlehut, for your comments tonight. Any questions? C. None. Thank you very much for your time. Up next is Thomas Carr, Littleton citizen. Good evening, Mr. Carr. When you are ready, you may begin.
There we go. Good evening, mayor, council. Thank you very much. My name is Tom Carr. I live in Littleton, Colorado. I'm the Director of Therapeutic Recreation and Military Programs at Craig Hospital. Craig is a nationally-known neurorehabilitation and research facility here in Inglewood, serve more than 500 inpatients and more than 5,000 outpatients on an annual basis, as well as employing over 1,000 staff. I'm here today to represent Craig in our support of the South Broadway Design Guidelines, an overall vision for the area, and overall vision for the area, specifically, the accessibility elements that would create a more welcoming community for all ages and abilities. Patients that come to Craig come from Inglewood, Colorado, and all over our nation. During their stays, patients and staff access the South Broadway area for therapy and community reintegration. Families often come and stay with their loved ones, which, loved ones, and call Inglewood home during the months that they are here with their family members as they rehab at Craig. After receiving care, many Craig patients decide to make Colorado and specifically Inglewood their home. They access services at Craig and in the greater Inglewood area. When we think of disabilities and accessibility, wheelchair users are usually the ones that first come to mind. It is simply due to the fact that people with motor disabilities have the most obvious disabilities and are most visible. However, while we do see and serve patients with mobility impairments, most disabilities are invisible. According to the United Nations, by 2050, one in six people in the world will be over the age of 65. Throughout, geez, excuse me. Thoughtful, accessible design is needed today and will be especially needed in the future as we all age. The simple fact is that we are all temporarily able-bodied, and in an instant or over many years, we all could join the community for which access is an absolute need. Intentional planning for accessibility is not only the right thing to do, it makes good business sense. Businesses that prioritize accessibility and inclusion stand out in an increasingly competitive market. Individuals with disabilities have purchasing power and can be loyal customers to businesses that are accessible. Over half of consumers with disabilities state that they would shop more frequently or spend more money in restaurants and stores that have made an effort to be accessible and welcoming to people with disabilities. Once again, thank you all for your time. Craig wishes to offer our support of the proposed guidelines. Our many patients, their families, and our staff appreciate our home here in Inglewood and the thoughtfulness of this process. Craig is willing to continue to be a resource during this project and offer our expertise and experience as needed.
Mr. Carr, thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. We have two questions. Start with Member Russell.
Thank you, and thank you for coming this evening. Has Craig been partnering with the city and the design, or the guidelines that have already been developed?
Yes. Yes, we've been. I don't know the exact, all the, but we have been involved in the process from the beginning, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Member Ward.
I think my question is more specific in nature. Do you see, from the population that you work with, issues traveling around the Broadway corridor now? And do you have any specific examples of the accessibility guidelines we're talking about adopting that would improve that?
Sure. And I can't speak to them specifically. We're dealing with, again, there's some aging infrastructure, historical things that absolutely need to be considered in any thoughtful planning process. There are always going to be maintenance, older type, especially when it comes to sidewalks, safe passage between vehicles and pedestrians, especially wheelchair users. There are aspects of that in that South Deborah Quarter that are identified in the new guidelines.
Okay, so if I hear you correctly, it's more about ensuring that when we make improvements in the future, we're planning for that.
Sure. And that is my understanding that most of this is forward-facing, yes.
Great, thank you.
All right. C. No further questions, Mr. Carr. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Jennifer Wyatt, I believe a District Four resident. Good evening, Jennifer. When you are ready to speak, you may begin.
Absolutely. Tonight, I want to address the proposal to spend upward of $85,000 to elect a mayor using a different method than we use to elect our city council members. Let me begin by acknowledging that 83% of our citizens already made their voices heard. They voted in favor of electing our mayor the same way we elect our council, meaning that the person receiving the most votes will win. If members of council would like to present alternative voting options, this should have been addressed in a regular election, not a special one. So, the questions become, why are we even considering spending upward of $130,000 on what citizens have already voted on? Why the sudden urgency in changing the way we elect our mayor? I haven't heard a valid reason as to why this is important right now. And why would we change the way we elect our mayor and not the way we elect our council members? Something isn't adding up. We have pressing needs right now that are affecting our community every day. We have lead lines that still need to be replaced that affect the health and safety of our residents, homeless services and affordable housing we have discussed for the four and a half years I have lived here. You used affordable housing as a large talking point when passing Code Next, yet I haven't seen anything go up that's affordable. What I have seen is large apartment buildings going up towering over single-family homes and impacting citizens' livability and not at the cost that many can afford. I have seen developers get richer at the expense of the citizens. As an IT professional and a resident, it is difficult to trust that we can even update these systems successfully and in a timely manner with the consistent issues we've had with implementing our new utility billing system. In my opinion, this council has lost much of the public's respect and trust at this point. When passing Code Next, you weren't even willing to take in the minor P&amp;Z recommendations. And the concerns and questions I've personally raised over the years, I've never felt have been addressed, so I stopped speaking up as much because it fell on deaf ears. You have managed to change the length of time citizens speak here at council and how often. It wasn't too long ago that many of you were upset at the cost of the recall, yet here we are wanting to spend $130,000 unnecessarily. It appears to, it appears you are only interested in spending taxpayer dollars when it affects you and instead of what the public is asking of you. It seems self-serving, in my opinion. Major apartment buildings are going up in multiple locations, requiring planning, infrastructure, and oversight. Let's not forget the insane amount of detours we have all over our city due to the water mains breaking and other repairs taking place. This money could go a long way towards making real improvements in these areas, instead of spending it on unnecessary election changes that we have already spent time on and voted on. Let's invest the $130,000 back into the neighborhood's infrastructure and future. Let's respect the votes that have already happened, listen to the residents, and spend our money more wisely.
Jennifer, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for Ms. White? C. None. Thank you for your time tonight. Up next is Hillary Portell, here to speak about the design guidelines, also a citizen from outside Inglewood. Hello, Hillary. When you are ready to begin, you may, you may begin.
Good evening. Thank you for the time this evening. I'm Hillary Portell, Executive Director of the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority. I live at 1124 South Milwaukee Street in Denver. I'm here to follow up on a couple of questions posed by city council members at our March 10th study session on the South Broadway Design Guidelines item for the downtown district. The first one was a concern that the guidelines would enforce uniformity of buildings. In fact, the guidelines are written to be very flexible and supportive of the eclectic nature of our main street. They are specifically not heavy-handed or prescriptive, for example, such as requiring specific architectural styles. They don't do that. The other question was how many cities in Colorado have design guidelines? The answer is that of 25 Colorado cities with 30,000 people or more, only four do not have design guidelines in their downtown areas, including Inglewood, and two of those don't even have original downtowns. That research was submitted in your meeting packet for your review tonight. I saw many colleagues from across the state last week at the annual Downtown Colorado Inc. Conference. Very happy to share with you tonight that downtown Inglewood won not one, but two statewide awards for downtown projects. We were recognized for innovation and partnerships for the CitySpark vacant space program in City Center and the Flower Pop Alley Activation off South Broadway. Thank you for your support of our programs. At the conference, we also learned something really important, and that is the importance of emotionally connecting with your downtown customers because they are twice as valuable to local businesses. Our local businesses need all the support they can get these days. Physical design, marketing, maintenance, beautification, and more help people feel connected to their community, its identity, and a sense of place. For several years now, community members have told us they love their traditional main street, and we've incorporated their input into the South Broadway Design Guidelines. In this way, new investors planning to renovate older buildings or build new ones can help us maintain and strengthen what people like the most about our main street, and we'll keep those customers coming back to our local businesses again and again. Thank you very much.
Hillary, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of council? C. None. Hillary, thank you very much for coming tonight. Up next is Blake Calvert, here to speak about South Broadway Guidelines, also outside of Inglewood residence. Good evening, Blake.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm not a resident, although I do own a business and... I am not a resident, although I do own a business and own property in the city. Yes, I'm here to speak tonight about the South Broadway Design Guidelines in several capacities. I am the board chair for the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority, and our entire board is in support of the design guidelines and has worked as a team and then also with the consulting team and with all the stakeholders within the downtown district to get a comprehensive document, to get a vision of what we want and want to propose, you know, as a structure of what we want downtown to progressively grow, but then retain, just like the guidelines represent, to reinforce the traditional Main Street and the character of South Broadway that we all know and love to this day, but then also trying to create a vibrant three-hundred-and-sixty-degree district that's uniquely Inglewood. And so, the purpose of guidelines is not to be prescriptive, it's there to show a vision of what it could be, giving recommendations. And so, as Hillary said before, these are not unique to Inglewood. These are very common in Colorado, in public spaces, in business improvement districts and DDAs and within cities, and as it's on the list that you provided, very common for even developers to self-impose on themselves for private development, like was done in Centennial, like was done in Broomfield, even down in Cass Rock, other developers have done this. So very common to have guidelines and everything. And again, the purpose is to get one cohesive vision for creating a district that's walkable, inclusive, and safe and welcoming for all. And so, certainly, as development happens and improvements are being made to properties, you can get good design and things that happen with an improvement district like this, but you want it to be cohesive and you want to set a standard so that it does not become hodgepodge in nature. And so that's where, in my other capacity tonight, being a business owner but then a property owner, we made a significant investment, and as part of that decision process, we were worried that there were no design guidelines for our building at thirty-four seventy-three South Broadway. And so, we highly encourage that, and we would not be worried that these guidelines would be imposed on any property owner, including ourselves. Finally, I'm a civil engineer also, and improvements to ADA, accessibility are must-needed on Broadway corridor, and these would help provide a cohesive plan. So I'm in support, and I do hope that you will support the plan moving ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, Blake. We have one question. Go ahead, Member Ward.
Mayor, I apologize, I did not address this at the beginning of Mr. Calvert's public comment, but according to one-five-two-nine C of the municipal code, if you are not a resident of the city, then you must name the city where you reside on the record.
I'm a resident of Greenwood Village.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further questions. Blake, thank you very much for your time tonight. Up next is Bob Stevenson, a District One resident. Good evening, Bob. When you are ready, you may begin.
There we go. Bob Stevenson Bateson Grant. Unlike a lot of the vitriol I've been listening to this evening, I just want to state that I don't think it's time to try and initiate a new voting method and to initiate a special election for the mayor. I think we'd be better off spending money elsewhere and not obligating ourselves to this task. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Bob, any questions for members of council? Seeing none, thank you for coming tonight, Bob. Up next is Matt Crabtree, also D-one resident.
Good evening, Matt. When you are ready, you may begin. All right, good evening. My name's Matt Crabtree. The last time I was before you guys was back in October of twenty-twenty-four. At that time, I requested that this council pass a resolution in support of an elected mayor in the city of Inglewood. At that time, it did go to vote, and five of you voted against it. Now we're at a point where it's suddenly urgent enough and important enough to change the way that we, the people of Inglewood here, vote for not council, but for the mayor's seat. The outcome of that election? Eighty-three percent overwhelming support in the city to have an elected mayor in the city of Inglewood. Now, as many of you know, I'm interested in history, so I'll tell you a little bit of history about the elected mayor in Inglewood. It was recently said at a study session that this would be our first election of a mayor. That's not the case. Actually, the last elected mayor was Charles Allen in nineteen forty-nine. In nineteen fifty-one, a special interest group felt it necessary to make municipal government more efficient by removing the right for people to vote for certain offices in the city. They succeeded, and for the last seventy-six years, we've taken for granted the fact we didn't have the right to vote for mayor. Last year, an initiative passed, and be it the same initiative that passed five years prior in the city of Littleton, to elect the mayor in Inglewood. When Littleton passed this, it passed by nearly the same amount, not as much, but it did pass by nearly the same amount. Littleton City Council did it on their own. It didn't require a citizen initiative like it did in Inglewood. Littleton City Council passed a resolution to put it on the ballot for a charter amendment on their own. They did not change the voting system, they kept the voting system the same. They had their first elected mayor in many, many years, in twenty-twenty-one. There was no need to, for a runoff election, there was no need for modifying the way that we here in Inglewood have and always voted for our public offices. I urge council this evening to reconsider spending unnecessary amounts of money on a special election to create a complex process that will continue to cost the city money in the future, when the system we have works just fine. Thank you.
Matt, thank you very much for your time tonight. I don't see any questions from council, so thank you for your time tonight. Up next is, just make sure, yes, it's Lindy, yeah, Lindy Curry. I believe you're a District Two resident. Good evening, Lindy. When you are ready to speak, you may begin.
Okay, thank you. I'm Lindy Curry. I live at Marion and Gerard in Inglewood. Last fall, the citizens of Inglewood clearly expressed the need to elect our mayor by democratic means of voting, not appointed. We want to vote on the mayor as we do for all the other city council members with a plurality of votes, meaning that whomever gets the most vote wins. We are, why are you proposing several options for choosing our mayor? Are you trying to rig the vote with a convoluted method such as ranked choice vote? Ranked choice voting is a very complicated and confusing method of choosing a candidate for the office. When you need a flow chart to explain how it works, it is not a transparent method of voting. We've heard a lot about saving democracy in the last few years, but what will undermine representative democracy faster than anything else is the idea that elections don't matter, that the system is rigged, and the elected officials don't really represent the people they claim to serve. At a time when at least a third of Americans believe that our elections are being rigged, why would we want to change to a system of voting where you have to look at a flow chart to tell why the winner won? If we want people to believe that every vote counts, why would we want a system in which people will see their votes thrown out? If we want to convince people that the electoral system itself isn't controlled by partisan and wealthy interests, why would we let organizations whose major donors are big-money leftist organizations such as the Hydra-headed Soros Foundation tell us how we should run our elections? It is telling that it was up to the citizens of Inglewood to initiate the drive for direct election of the mayor, but is now it is part of the council that proposes to do it by ranked choice voting. As with Code Next, it is council proceeds to change the way that Inglewood conducts its elections without a clear mandate from the people of Inglewood to do so, it will be fair to question whom do you really serve?
Lindy, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming tonight. Up next is Noah Kaplan, here to speak for the EDDA, also a District Two resident. Hello, Noah. When you are ready, you may begin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Let me just first say that I want to thank you for the thoughtful process that you're going through to make sure that our mayor will be elected by a majority of the city, but that's not what I'm here to speak about tonight. I'm the founder of an organization called Vibrant Inglewood. Vibrant Inglewood submitted a letter of support for the South Broadway Design District Guidelines, which is in your packets, and was brought up by Councilmember Russell at your prior study session. I wasn't personally involved in writing that letter, because I do currently sit on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I didn't want to bias my role ahead of hearing about those standards at the commission. So tonight, I wanted to both provide the council with a face to go with the name Vibrant Inglewood, after it came up last time, and also to express my personal support for the downtown design guidelines. In my view, downtown Inglewood is in the process of changing for the better. While past development was heavily car-centric and divided our downtown in our downtown housing and businesses across huge parking lots, the city, the EDDA, and Inglewood small business community are doing the work now of knitting the area back together into what can become a tight-knit, vibrant, walkable downtown that better serves the people of Inglewood and makes it a destination for others to visit. At the same time, we want to preserve and protect what is left of the unique historical character of downtown Inglewood and ensure that future development is consistent with both that historical character and the future vision for the area. The EDDA's proposed design guidelines accomplish both of those important goals. The range of benefits that these guidelines would bring is, in my view, best evidenced by the diversity of voices that submitted letters of support. You have letters from community groups, downtown businesses, members of the disability community, historic Inglewood, among others. What you see across those letters is a belief that the standards will strengthen what is already great about our downtown while enhancing its aesthetics and accessibility so that it can be enjoyed by even more people. I urge the city council to vote in support of adopting these design standards as one important step towards the strong positive vision that is emerging for what downtown Inglewood can be. Thank you.
Noah, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any, go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you, and thank you for coming to present tonight. So has planning and zoning already ruled on the design guidelines? You've already had the meeting.
So they were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was not something that was brought to us for a vote or an approval, it was just sort of a, similar to your study session, where we had the opportunity to ask questions and, you know, have input, but the, there was no vote or approval from planning and zoning.
Okay, and this, and I don't expect you to answer this, but my, my real question is, I don't understand why the design guidelines aren't included in the ordinance, and I will be asking that question later this evening when we check that out. Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Member Russell. Any one else? Go ahead, Member Wright.
If the design guidelines are adopted, in the future, would this type of stuff come to P and Z, and is it something that you could possibly be voting on in future developments?
I'm probably not the best person to speak. My understanding of the way that it works would be that it would go through, if it was a, if there was a PUD or something that would otherwise be coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission, then it would, but many things probably wouldn't. It would go through the normal permitting process.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no further questions. Noah, thank you for your time tonight. Actually, I forgot to mention this. Member Russell, you're giving a responsive public comment, so.
[laughter]
You take great notes, Member Russell. I know that you'll be ready, so apologies for that, though. Next up is Jan McCoy, a D, excuse me, District Three resident, I should say. Good evening, Jan. When you are ready, you may begin. And there should be like a star there to make, make it green. There we are.
Thanks. Good evening, council members. Well, I too am here to address the ranked choice voting. There've been some amazing speakers tonight, and I applaud you all, I really, really do. You've done your homework, and you deserve to be recognized, and I recognize you, and I hope that you all do too. Part of what they're trying to tell you is they don't feel like you're listening to them. Whenever I see this kind of rushed and hurry-up maneuvering that city council is proposing this evening, every voting citizen of Inglewood should be asking themselves, why? Why is council pushing against my vote? Why would council insinuate, I don't really mean what I voted for? That council should immediately step on, not step in, but step on what our votes mean. What are you seeking control of? What's gone wrong? What are you afraid of, trusting your constituents? It's quite insulting, it seems very intentional, and I think you've heard that again and again this evening. RCV is a forced voting system, in my opinion, and I did quite a bit of research before showing up tonight, because I, like most people out here, are quite ignorant of what this really means and what it, how it will work. If you don't rank any other candidate and your first-choice candidate gets eliminated, your ballot becomes exhausted. That's the term they use. I think we feel pretty exhausted right now for not having had our voice count, and it's thrown out. Really? Someone brought up trust as an issue. I think it removes the rights of the voters by transferring votes without my consent. Someone brought up that it looks like a spreadsheet. I would really have to ask what the envelope carrying these ballots to our mailboxes would look like. I can't imagine the confusion for the voters and the cost to the city to print and tally them, and that's been brought up again and again. You know, we're talking about Tabor refunds, we're talking about things that people think they would rather see that money spent on, police officers, security, not this kind of Mickey Mouse. I'm not smoozed or impressed by the spin and the promises of RCV after reading the pros and cons. In closing, I ask you to leave the mandate as given to city council last November, and part of what I read, and I'll see how much, I'm not going to get much read, ranked choice voting gives voters an ultimatum, either vote for people you dislike and who you oppose, who oppose your principles.
Ms. McCoy, your three minutes are, your three minutes are up. Ms. McCoy, thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. Any questions? Thank you very much for your time tonight, Ms. McCoy. Up next is Michael Chisholm, D-one resident. Good evening, Michael. When you are ready, you may begin.
Thank you, Mayor Sierra, council members. I recently attended a study session, and the conversation that interested me the most was the conversation about ranked choice voting for the mayor. I'm a little slow on the intake, but my takeaway impression is, I don't see how a voting methodology at this point in time has anything to do with electing a mayor. I'm not necessarily saying I'm against ranked choice voting, but I don't understand the juxtaposition, I don't understand a bringing those together at this point in time. I think that a voting methodology should be one used for everybody in elected office in this city. I don't think it should be a special method for one particular election or one position. I understand that we're talking at least eighty thousand dollars to go down this path towards voting methodology changes. I'm concerned about that, I don't think it's a prudent use of money and time. It doesn't seem to me, according to the information I heard the other day, it's an awful lot in a very short timeframe. There's an educational process that the voters would need to go through. They need time to consider this, and I don't think putting a timeframe on it where people are rushed to become educated, become motivated, is healthy or prudent. So I hope in your considerations, you will weigh those factors. Thank you.
Michael, Michael, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for Michael? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time, Michael. Up next is Ms. Dickerson, a D-one resident. Up next is Ms. Dickerson, a D1 resident. Good evening, Ms. Dickerson. When you are ready, you may begin.
CNN Dickerson Bates Logan. Citizens voted overwhelmingly to elect one at-large council member with the additional title and limited powers of mayor because the citizens were tired of four district council members who were elected only by a quarter of the city selecting one of their number to be mayor. I realize it makes it more difficult for certain district council members to slide into the position of mayor without the support of the entire city, but the voters have spoken. There should not be a change for the, in this election, for this election, changing the voting, the voting manner for this election. You condemn citizens for the special election in the recall, opposed it vociferously because of cost, and yet now you want a special election at great cost and questionable legality? As one of your first speakers said, there is a question as to whether it is legal for you to do a special election that would change the voting. Why don't you try putting your proposal on the regular election and not make any changes? Stop trying to overturn the will of the people.
Ms. Dickerson, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming. Up next is, let's see here, last name is Gold, I believe. Can't read the first name. Oh, it is Nicole? I'm sorry, what's that? G-U-L-D?
Goldie, G-U-L-D-E, yeah.
Okay, that's an E. Ms. Goldie, thank you very much for coming tonight. You're a D1 resident. When you are ready, you may begin.
Hi, I'm Nicole Goldie. I'm here today to speak on being targeted as being homeless by the police officers. A couple of years ago, there, there was an incident that happened with me and my RV. The police had showed up and told me to come out and get my ticket. There was two officers on the side hiding. They grabbed, when I stepped out of my RV, they grabbed me. And I was unsure and scared what was even happening as I was cuffed and put in the back of a cop car. They were yelling at me, "Who's in my RV?", and I told them, "It's none of their business. It's my home. They don't have permission to enter." They brought their riot shields and loaded rifles and entered my home, charged my boyfriend with interference, and arrested him. My arms were black and blue from the force of them. They took me to Arapahoe, and I did a wa, walk-through for, all for a traffic ticket. I feel like I was unjust, this was unjust because of a traffic ticket, and I just wanted to put it on record, the, the force that they used against me was not, not okay. They had stolen my home. I had, they did a walk-through in Arapahoe. I came back, but on bus, everything was gone. They had stolen everything from me for parking on the sidewalk. That's what I got a ticket for. And then everything was dismissed after, two weeks later, it was dismissed. I'm currently not homeless anymore, so I just wanted to put that on record. Thank you.
Ms. Goldie, thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. Any questions? Member Russell has a question.
Thank you, Ms. Goldie. Have you gotten your RV back?
I did, due to the nonprofit from Regan Benson. She, she, she did help me do that. Yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Goldie, just one question for me. Did you say this happened two years ago, or was this more recent?
Two years ago, yeah.
Do you remember the timeline or the month?
It was November 26th, no, 28th of '22.
Oh, you have the, okay. Thank you so much, November '22. Ms. Goldie, I see no further questions. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Ron Pickens, a, I believe a D2 resident. Good evening, Mr. Pickens. When you are ready, you may begin.
I'm Ron Pickens. I live at 2298 East Floyd Place, Inglewood, Colorado. Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to express my opinion on the new ordinance that is prepared for a special election in August called ranked choice voting. An ordinance is a law enacted by a local government to regulate activities within its jurisdiction. Ordnances are typically developed with input from the citizens and community members at a public hearing for recommendations to city government for such an ordinance. The ordinance being proposed is changing the way we, registered voters, have voted in the past. Over 80% of Inglewood voters voted to directly elect a mayor on November 2025. It was not with ranked choice voting, not a special election either. Ranked choice voting is at best a very, very bad idea, and to change our existing voting system to a lottery called instant runoff election is wrong. If ranked choice voting is such a great option, I have a question for you all sitting in front of me. Why was this soundly defeated by the Colorado voters in November 2024 after thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars were spent to have it on the ballot for voter approval? To you as city council members who are wanting ranked short voting, I ask the question, "Why? Why do you want this? What is behind this? Who would benefit the most? For sure, it's not the citizens of Inglewood. Why should the Inglewood taxpayers be forced to spend thousands upon thousands of dollars for a special election in August? I ask you again, why? For those of you who want this, table it and put it on ranked choice voting on the ballot in November 2025 unless the constituents, the people, decide not you, the council members. The Inglewood voters are educated, and they do understand what this would do to our existing voting system. Let them decide, and do not deter or prevent that from them. Thank you."
Mr. Pickens, thank you very much for coming tonight. Member Wright has a question.
I probably should have asked this earlier. Do you realize that one of the options may be on the special election, not ranked choice voting, but possible a runoff election if we do pure plurality? And a candidate doesn't get more than 50%, that it could end up in a runoff election could be a possibility? What is your opinion of that?
My opinion of ranked choice voting is a waste of time, a waste of money, and basically it could go on forever, as Ms. Kittlehut stated. We could spending up over $400,000 due to this. Can the city really afford $400,000 when we need more police? We have crime. We have much more urgent issues that this council needs to address than ranked choice voting.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, Mr. Pickens, thanks for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Up next is Idemay Nichols, a, I believe you're a D4 resident.
I was.
Got this. Ms. Nichols, there we are.
Can I possibly put up some time and let Doug call me, please?
Well, Ms. Nichols, we actually may get through the list. So, do you want me to just bypass you, and maybe you come back to you if we get to the time? Are you okay with that?
Okay, we'll, we'll see.
Doug is actually, Doug is three away, so he, we got 30 minutes left in terms of public comment, so. All right. So, we'll pass on Ms. Nichols. Hopefully, we could get back to her. Up next is Drewann Benson, I believe a D2 resident. Good evening, Ms. Benson. When you are ready, you may begin.
Thank you. So, I want to urge you to keep the plurality voting system already in place. Voters defeated ranked choice voting at the state level this past fall, and clearly, from the other comments, 83% of the city voters chose to elect a mayor. And changing the voting system would take a major precise education effort, and it'll be expensive. Changing the voting system is complicated, and to explain that and understand that is a hurdle I don't think we're prepared to cross. Changing the voting, voting system will create chaos and confusion. Changing, changing the voting system will deter voter participation, which is already challenged. Aspen voters repealed the ranked choice voting, and they're clearly an educated voter constituency. Telluride said it was too costly and time-intensive. They no longer use it. So, why can't we learn from them? Going forward, I want to urge you to create a monthly poll inviting citizens to give feedback on initiatives that the council is working on and asking us, the citizens, what our directives, opinions, and needs are. This can easily be done. You can send out a postcard, just like you did when you asked for the voting for the design preferences for the city and neighborhood signs. You can easily engage us, and I really want to urge you to do that, to get our opinions and our specific directives. Not a lot of people have time available in their schedule to attend these meetings, but obviously, from 83%, people want to participate. They want to elect their mayor, and they want to have a say in what is decided on the city's behalf. So, I want to encourage you to set up a poll and ask for that. Thank you.
Ms. Benson, thank you very much for your time. Any questions? Seeing none, Ms. Benson, thank you for coming tonight. All right, we're back to the top of the list, Mr. Cohen. You are a D2 resident. Mr. Cohen, I missed you the last time I was, for the last council meeting, so it's been a while, but looking forward to your speak. So, when you're ready, you may begin.
Yes, thank you. I want to ask you guys to say yes on CB21 tonight, the South Broadway Guidelines. I really appreciate all the work that was done by the EDDA and the city staff members and you, Mayor Ciara. This was a huge project. Thank you all for the hard work that went into this. You know, I never paid much attention to the historic nature of downtown, although I spent my whole first half of my life shopping there, like the Madeon F store and JCPenney and Woolworths and Kaufman's and the Breakfast Queen and other places along the street. Sam Hill Barber Shop, used to cut my hair when I used to have some. I never paid much attention to the uniqueness until we moved our hobby shop here in 1999. Then I began to learn about and admire the buildings along Broadway. Did any of you visit Bonnie Bree Hobby Shop when it was in the Odd Fellows Hall? The store was owned by my sister and I. We were here for 16 years after being over on University Boulevard for 39 years. Our employees loved downtown Inglewood. Our customers loved downtown Inglewood. The store closed in 2015. 10 years later, I still see some of the customers. And I was amazed when I found out the history of the Odd Fellows building. Then I, I started paying attention on my, at the hobby store. Pedestrian safety was a really important thing, and this is about 20 years ago. Emergents wanted a mid-block crossing where the Passions were, and as I was traveling through Longmont, I saw one of the controlled crosswalks and took a picture of it and gave it to Darrell, Darren Hollingsworth and Brooke Bell, and then the community development and the crosswalk came into existence. In 2012, a number of us worked to change the sign code to allow artwork in the buildings. Headed west on South Broadway, had art on the side of the building, and the city decided after a legal fight that outdoor art was okay. Now we have outdoor art all over the place. I want to see the character of historic downtown preserved. On the back of the piece of paper, I've got some other kind of notes, but I'm out of time now. So, thank you.
Mr. Cohen, thank you very much for coming tonight. Any questions for Mr. Cohen? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Up next is Rebecca Kramer, a D2 resident. By the way, just for the members of the public, we are going to public comment until about 8:50, so we may be able to get through the names tonight. Good evening, Rebecca. When you are ready, you may begin.
Good evening, Council. I prepared a lot of notes and a long statement tonight regarding the ordinance being proposed on voting. I'm not going to go through all of the points. They've been made over and over again this evening. I'm just going to say that I'm in the same support as the rest of the individuals that have spoken against this ordinance, and I do not believe it's in the best interest of the citizens of Inglewood to do this at this time. And not only the turmoil, turmoil that is going on right now, it is the most financially irresponsible step to spend this money. It's just ridiculous. So, I'm, I'm asking you not to go forward with the ordinance, and I'm going to skip all my points because they've already been stated. I really appreciate the mass amount of people that have shown up tonight. I do want to make one second point, and I thanked them in person, but I want to thank the new police chief, David Jackson, and the EPD for stepping up enforcement. It's been noticeable, and it's making a difference in getting people to slow down, much more than speed bumps or bump outs or all the other stupid sticks and bricks and stuff that the city's put up. Get a little, get a few police cars out there, and people really start behaving a little bit better, so. But again, thank you.
Rebecca, thank you for your time. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Kevin Wright is up next, I believe a D4 resident. Good evening, Kevin. When you are ready, you may begin.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Kevin Wright. I'm Vice Chair of CD6, Carl CD6. I'm here to speak on behalf of the citizens, not the developers, not the insiders, but the people. Let's talk about the Affordable Housing Task Force, which has already been presented to this council. Let's call it what it was, a staff-driven initiative, not a citizen-led initiative. I was on that task force, and when they rode it nine to one to go after the small landlords as a funding source, I was the only no. Why? Because small landlords are the backbone of this city. They provide affordable housing for the tenants in the city of Inglewood. They rent out basements, single units, duplexes. They carry the risk, maintain the property, and do it with subsidies, without subsidies or tax breaks. And yet, they were the target, the small guy. Not the corporate developers, not the, not the city which holds leases on multiple buildings, not the powerful. It was the small guy. Here's what they didn't tell you. Developers are allowed by their way out of building affordable housing by paying a fee in lieu. That's right, for a price, they can walk away from their obligation and they can accept cash. So let me ask, who's really footing the bill for affordable housing? The little guy? The local landlord? The taxpayer? The people trying to survive in a city that's making it harder every day? That isn't housing policy, it's a shell game. And now, ranked choice voting. Another plan being pushed, and again, the burden falls on everyday citizens, the ones sitting behind me. It replaces a clear, simple, historic voting system with the confusing process that opens the door to voter suppression. Voter suppression. Especially for seniors, working families, and voters who aren't turned into the fine print of your ranked choice voting in runoff elections. Inglewood already has strong turnout in city council elections, so why change it? Why change it? What problems are we solving? Can you tell me what problems? The truth, this isn't about engagement, it's about control, it's about changing the rules, protect incumbents, and push agendas the people didn't ask for. The city protects the powerful and punishes the people. I'm here to say, we see it, we reject it, and we will expose it. Scott, I have a press release ready for you, my friend.
Kevin, your three minutes are up, Kevin. Any questions for Kevin Wright?
My standard, please. How are we related, for those that don't know? And did I have any part in what you wrote today? Thank you.
Alright, any further questions? Kevin, thanks for your time. Up next is Joseph DiSimone, here to, I believe you're a D2 resident. Good evening, Joseph, when you are ready, you may begin. Get the lights on, you're ready to go. No, one more, one more. Make it green, there should be a star. There we go, we're good. Go ahead.
And my subject here is totally different compared to what everybody else has said. I listened to the students in Inglewood about their trip to Germany, and they said they were telling us how clean and how nice the town was and everything. I want to know why Inglewood is not clean like every other city is. We have streets that are falling apart. The street that I live on, I haven't seen anybody clean our street for maybe two years. The last time I saw somebody come down our street to clean our street with the street cleaner, came down the middle of the street five times, went up the street, came down the street. The gutters are still crappy as always, but the street, I've got to clean the street in town. I want to know when they're going to do something about it. I mean, look at 285, 285 is falling apart. We're not, are we proud of that? I'm not. I don't know why you people should be. It's terrible the way it looks. And I, I don't know, I just don't think anybody's doing anything about it. I called CDOT one time to find out when they were going to pave 285, and they give me some stupid answer. What are we going to do? What are you guys going to do about it? You got to do something. It looks terrible. That's our city. Let's be proud of it. Thank you.
Joseph, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions? Seeing none, Joseph, thank you very much for coming tonight. Up next is Gary Kozak, a D4 resident.
Good evening, Council. Gary Kozak, Oxford and San, Oxford and Le Pan Street. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and supporting. There are several others here that had me end up leaving earlier. I'm representing my entire neighborhood on this voting little bit. I've been in front of you several times, but I do have one misdirection on that. There's a couple, or maybe even three council members here that comment after I leave, behind my back, make cheap comments about me. Where's my respect? I've lived here longer than you are alive. Alright? I've been here 74 years. My family homesteaded here. And you have laugh in your face. It's irresponsible on your part. I have never come forward and asked you to do something outrageous. You want to spend all this money on a special election, you got a city attorney over here making almost $60,000 more than the standard. You got a city manager that's above the standard, but you can't give a judge a couple thousand-dollar raise. This is ridiculous, all because you've got some little thing up your nose because they're not doing something quite what you like, and yet now you want to turn around and spend $100,000, $150,000 on a special election. Well, you go ahead and vote for it, because I'm for one telling you right now that I will file for a referendum, and it won't be hard at all to get plenty of them and drag it on. Now, I have one point of reference on the Sam's Automotive. I'm not an expert, but I've had experts come up to me and say, they started putting the structure on top of the cement within a week. Cement's got to have cure time. I don't know what the new stuff is, but now I can stand back there on Oxford and I can look at that building and the parking structure. If you look from this section and this section into the middle, it's going down. Visible on my eyes, and yeah, it might be a deception, but I'll tell you this right now, that if it collapses, you've now been told, and I hope that there is not a structural problem on that, because it's been now brought to your attention from me. Here again, people, thank you so much for showing up.
Gary, thank you for your time tonight. Any questions for Mr. Kozak? Seeing none, thank you for coming tonight, Gary. Up next is Kevin, I can't, I'm going to butcher the last name, apologies.
Amatuzio, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Amatuzio. When you are, you are a, is that a D4 resident, District Board?
Yeah, 4830 South Jason, just north of Bellevue Park.
Thank you, Kevin, when you are ready, you may begin.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. If you all are listening, you know what your constituents think about this ranked choice voting stuff. My presentation should be unnecessary. Listen to them, and let this thing be dead on arrival. I will try not to duplicate what these fine people ahead of me have already said in their informed discussion. I'd like to point out that Alaska is the last state that had a ranked choice voting election, and the results that came back are pretty significant. Half of the voters said it was, it was too difficult to complete. They said it was confusing, and they did not appreciate the fact that they had to vote on multiple occasions. The studies found that it disproportionately hurt the voting ability of the lower-educated minorities, women, single parents, people who have difficulty going to the polls. 15% of the votes in Alaska were invalidated because the ballots were improperly completed. That would render any election in our state a farce. Alaska, right now, is in the process of trying to revoke the enabling legislation. 14 states have already banned it, including Kansas most recently. The learned studies and the treatises say it forces people to vote for people that they don't want, it rewards extremists, and it requires you to vote for candidates who don't express your will simply so you don't lose your vote if your candidate doesn't come in first in the initial voting. I noted that our city charter, Article 2, Section 1.1, says when the procedure for a municipal election is in doubt. We have an election commission, and the election commission should weigh in on the proper procedure. I haven't heard from Judith Dunlap, the chair, I've not heard from Robert Watson. Where are those folks on this question, and what's their position? I'm not pleased at the way this came before the city. I got an email on Thursday saying that the PUD hearing for tonight was canceled, didn't say anything about whether or not this city council meeting was going forward. But I dug out the agenda and found out that this item, which is the most important thing to come to this city council in probably a decade, was Item 12A2, behind high school field trips and a new water pump for Broken Tea Golf Course. Come on, guys, don't try and slide this under the rug on your voters. We're aware of what's going on, and we're not very happy about it. Let this thing die, please. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, Kevin. Actually, I don't see any questions, so thank you very much for coming tonight. Is Regan Benson still here tonight? I don't think so. So moving on, Idem A Nickel. We are back to you, Ms. Nickel. You're a D2 resident?
D4.
D4?
District 4.
Ah, District 2. Okay. Alright, Ms. Nickel, I'm sorry. Go ahead, when you are ready, you may begin.
Okay. There's so many things that I would like to say tonight that so many people have already said. I agree with all of the people about this consideration that you council people want to do. It is not fair to the people. It is not right. We already, we already voted, and I don't know, have you come out with any reasons why you want to change it? The citizens vote? I don't believe so. And the other thing is some of these gray big apartments that are going up, they're so close to our little city of Inglewood, our Broadway. We're losing so many of our houses. I can tell you, I have had so many young people that have moved into Inglewood, and they like the small community, and they've bought up some of these really old houses that they have turned into beautiful homes, and they don't want a high-rise by them to cut off any gardens that they may want. I talked to one gentleman a long time ago. He came from Detroit to Inglewood. He left Detroit because of all of the gray big buildings that were going up everywhere that completely killed their city that he lived in, and it was because there were so many people that moved in that, and there was no children, and pretty soon, all of those buildings were empty and decaying. And he said, I wanted to come out west where I could have my own home, not buy a high-rise, I could have a garden and sunshine. And he says, I love it here. And that was a number of years ago, and I can see our little city doing this very same thing. All these high-rises, how many children are in these high-rises? The schools have hardly any students left. When my children are going to Inglewood High School, like the 10th, 11th, and 12th, for one grade, the 10th grade or the 11th grade had more kids in school than Inglewood has now with all the junior high and high school. And are there going to be any families moving in these high-rises? We want families to come in, and there's not going to be families coming in with all these high-rises. I go by a lot of them, you don't see any children. We're going to lose our city, we're going to lose our children, and one day, these high-rises are just going to be empty like a lot of the other places. So I would like for you to consider not changing, putting up any more high-rises through our little downtown of Inglewood, Colorado. Thank you.
Ms. Nickel, thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. Any questions? Seeing none. Ms. Nickel, thank you very much for your time. And we are to our last speaker tonight, we have Peter Eckle, a D3 resident. Good evening, Peter, when you are ready, you may begin.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council. Peter Eckle, I live at 4300 block of Logan Street. I just wanted to share something that I think is sort of valuable to our freedom, and it's just a paragraph from the American Constitution, its origins and development, written in 1948, published by Norton &amp; Company, New York. One grand theme runs through all three centuries of American constitutional history, now four. It is the idea of limited government, or what Professor C.H. McIlwain has called constitutionalism. The doctrine of limited government holds that government should proceed within the authority of established institutions and laws, that governmental authority should be limited and defined by law, and that government officials should be responsible to law. A government of this kind is often somewhat loosely described as one of the laws and not of men. Without doubt, the evolution of limited government constitutes one of the most significant chapters in the history of human freedom. In the 20th century, now 21st, when free political institutions are once again under powerful attack in the Western world, the central thesis of American constitutionalism is that free men can solve the problems of modern society under processes of law and without resort to tyranny. Thank you for your time.
Peter, thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. Any questions? Seeing none. Peter, thank you very much for your time. I don't believe I missed anyone. If I am incorrect about that, let me know, but I do think we got through all the names. Alright, Member Russell, you are giving a response to public comment, so when you are ready, please begin.
Thank you very much. And you know, I was being sarcastic when he said, you know it's your turn. Of course I knew it was my turn. I just want to thank every single one of you who came out tonight to let us know what you think. I want to thank you for not giving up, because you do make a difference. I can't guarantee you of what the outcome is going to be tonight, but I do guarantee you that I heard everything every one of you said, and it means something to me. And I, I want to see you represented by all seven of us up here, not just by a few. I, I'm not going to go through and mention each one of you by name that came to speak about the election. You all put everything into words so more eloquently than we could have done. You all spoke about the same thing, but different perspective, and, and I know that some people think that you're being negative when you speak the truth. You are not. You are being positive, and I felt nothing but respect tonight from every one of you in making your wishes known. I, I do want to bring up a few people. I just want to, Rita Brinkman. I met you tonight for the first time. I greatly appreciate that, and I want to thank you for your service to the city of Inglewood, and that you finally saw what you were trying to do come to fruition. And city attorney, she is the one that is responsible for Rita's rule, not me. Let's see, let me go, and the people, I'm not going to call you out by name either, that came to speak about the design guidelines, I also appreciate that. I don't necessarily see what you all see, but I think it's there. I just want to make sure that we get it put into law. Let's see here. Hang on just a second. Shannon, I can't find you, but you are on my list, and I want to tell you, I do appreciate what you have come to speak to us about. I have been working on that, and I'm going to ask it now in public. I have asked before, there are a boatload of emails from you to city staff, including at all levels. I would like a council request. I want information on that, because I want to know what happened. Just from my reading, and I'm going to put this out there in public, my reading says that your fence was torn down by your neighbor. That is how I took that. If I'm wrong, I want you to come and tell me that after this meeting. I would be very angry, the battle that she has fought for the last couple of years, and... And Mr. Kozak saying how council makes fun of you because of things that you've said. I am very incensed by that, but I believe those things have been said to you, Shannon, personally, to your face. And I apologize for that, and I want to get to the bottom of this. And we will get to the bottom of this. I'm sorry that you had to come, but there is going to be a huge council request on this, and I will get in touch with you again. Thank you for coming. I think, let's see, Nicole Goldie, I also would like to do a council request on the report that was made tonight regarding that case. And if I have missed, I mean, I got a lot of notes here. If I have missed someone, I do thank you all for coming. I greatly appreciate it, and we will be discussing this later tonight, the mayor issue especially, and the design guidelines we'll be talking about also. So, thank you very much for your input in the city. I appreciate it.
Member Russell, thank you very much for covering that. Member Wright, go ahead.
Just one more. Mr. DeSimone, is there a schedule of street cleaning that we may be able to get to him and make sure that the middle of the street isn't just cleaned, that the gutters and stuff also are cleaned, that we could get that scheduled out? I know that there's been a couple council requests that Member Russell and myself have done about 285 and getting that cleaned. I believe one of them is outstanding, that I put out that the last time he was here on 285 getting it. Remember?
Was it 285 or Floyd? I remember the Floyd ones.
And I believe he spoke, maybe it was Member Noonan Camp that put out about 285 when he spoke previously. I know CDOT's a big issue, and that's been addressed previously, but if he's speaking specifically about his area and the street cleaning, they're two different issues, so.
Member Russell, do you have another?
No, thank you.
Anything else from members of council? Go ahead, Member Ward.
Just a brief point of personal privilege, Mayor. I spoke briefly last week. I wanted to respond directly to Mr. Kozak. To the extent that you thought that I was mocking you in my member's choice in previous sessions, that was not my goal, and I apologize for that. I think I stated clearly at that time, but I'll just repeat it again for anyone who might be curious about it. The appropriate time for a member whose night it is not to respond to public comment, so tonight was Member Russell's chance to respond to public comment, I believe that it's inappropriate for other members to give council response when they are not the council member giving response to public comment. So to the extent that I have comments remaining to be made, I will preserve those for member's choice at the end of the session. I don't do that because the people who gave public comment have left the room. I do it because I believe that council decorum requires it. So anytime you would like to have a conversation, I've said before, I'm open and welcome. I'd love to sit down with you. So, thank you.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to take a quick minute here to respond to those of you who came to speak about the potential of a runoff election or some other type of election. I honestly, I hear a lot of common ground between what you guys are saying and what I know at least I'm after is, you know, we all, I think we agree that some special elections are a waste of money and some are critical for the city. We may disagree about which or which. I thought a, you know, special recall election one month before the regular election was a waste of money. And I, you know, I stand behind that, but I do think that a special runoff election to determine which candidate gets to a majority of the citizens could be a wise use of money.
Members of public, please, if you could just hold your, you've had your chance to speak, so members of public, please, no further comments. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And then further, I would say, I think we also agree that the will of the majority of citizens is important in our city. And I know a number of you mentioned the majority of citizens who voted to establish a directly elected mayor. I think that was critical, and I'm, you know, and now that we know the will of the citizens on that, I think it's wonderful to implement. I also think it's critical to know which mayoral candidate could reach a majority of the citizens in the election, which is why I'm interested in looking at this. So I hope that, you know, that even if we disagree on some of the details of this, we're aiming to figure out what the citizens want and how we could potentially implement that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Members of public, please, if you could please just, all right, so anything else on public comment from members of council? If not, do we want to take a 10-minute break? All right, so let's take a 10-minute break. It's 8:55. Let's start up at 9:05. There's still plenty of agenda to get through. Members of council, if you could please be seated. All right, members of council. All right, everyone, we are now back. Are you able to hear this? Can you hear it?
I can do that, yeah.
No, we're good. Well, I'll just do it. Members of the public, we are now back. We are moving on to agenda item nine. This is consent agenda items. Members of, or members of council, I didn't see any items pulled. Do we want to pull one? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Actually, I apologize. I was in the car on the way home today, and so I forgot to pull. I would like to pull 9C2.
9C2? Perfect. All right, so we pulling 9C2. I'm hoping that we have a member of staff that can speak to that item. All right, so any other items? If not, can I get a motion to approve 9A1 and 9C1?
Move to approve 9A1 and 9C1.
Thank you, Member Pring. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Pring?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ice.
All right. For 9C2, this is an agreement for the pump station project at Broken Tea Golf Course. Do we have a member of staff? Do we have golf manager Shannon Puccio or golf course superintendent Jeremiah Stumpf?
Hi, Mayor. This is Shannon. I'm virtual.
Hey, Shannon. Thank you very much. Hold on, let's see if we get, can you speak again? Let's see if we can get that audio up a little bit.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Perfect. All right, we have a question from Member Russell.
Okay. My question is, is the financing, is it a loan or a donation to Broken Tea Golf Course, the money that we're asking for?
Money that we're asking for will be part of our reserve fund with our excess revenues that we had in 2024.
Did at one point, when it first came forward, it was suggested that you might need a loan? Did you ever get a loan from the city?
We have not yet. We have put that on hold temporarily until we have more, a better understanding of the work that needs to be done, specifically with the clubhouse.
Okay, so this money will come out of the reserve, the extra reserves you got in 2024. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. I just wanted to make sure the budget was clear.
That's a good memory, Member Russell.
All right, thank you.
All right, any further questions for members of council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve 9C2?
I move to approve 9C2. I move to approve nine C two.
Thank you, member Russell. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, member Wright. Any further comments? Can we please vote?
Mayor Brotem Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Pring.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven ice.
Thank you. Um, as stated earlier, there are no public hearing items for tonight. We're moving on to eleven A one. This is the municipal code cleanup updates to Title One. We have City Attorney Terrence Niles.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, as for background, um, one of the first projects that city council ever asked me to work on in my first annual review in the fall of 2021 was to take a look at municipal code from beginning to end and clean it up. Um, meaning, uh, update things that were out of date, look at things that no longer applied, um, look at things that city, um, process had changed, but municipal code was the same. And, um, so this is one of the ordinances for, uh, that project. And just from background for timing now, um, first we looked at, um, our charter, beginning to end, and, uh, proposed some changes and sent those to the voters. Then after that was done, then we turned to this municipal code cleanup project. So we've been working on it for about a year and a half. Um, we first reviewed it beginning to end, then we hired a third party, MuniCode Civic Plus, that also hosts our online municipal code to look at it and propose, um, changes for legal compliance or best practices based on their knowledge and experience with other cities. And that was a report that we provided to council in the fall, or, uh, around the holidays. Um, but during that time, then we also began, um, reviewing code to, uh, draft ordinances to make those changes. So there are multiple parts. We have what, um, I called a series of code cleanup ordinances, and this is one of them. But then we also have, um, well, we're working on more substantive changes. And when we discovered things were, that were just so out of date, that they needed extensive review, extensive study, uh, and then consideration of substantive changes. Um, any significant substantive changes to any section of code is brought to council separately, um, for a study session first, and then for, uh, direction, and then to finalize the ordinance and bring it for action. So anything that's significant, um, or, uh, significant regulatory change, it's our intention to bring that separately. So, for example, now at the beginning of May, um, you will see, uh, a study session and then an ordinance specifically on our, uh, sales and use tax code. Uh, that was previously scheduled for an earlier study session, but it was tabled to now early May. So that's the background on that. Um, for, for the most part, we're seeing a lot of, um, municipal code sections that, um, just refer to he, because at the time, our code was written largely in the fifties and then recodified in the eighties. Um, everything was written to just say he, so to reflect today's workforce, to, to remove that specific gender reference, correct typographical errors, um, repeal or update provisions that conflict with our charter. And, uh, in, in this title specifically, Title One, to also clarify time calculations. Now, we originally had scheduled or planned to bring one ordinance to city council for cleanup once a month, but, um, now because they've been tabled, there's three on tonight's agenda. But, uh, it's our goal to, to bring one a month, so we don't overwhelm you, overwhelm you with these cleanup provisions. Uh, so the proposed changes I've already previewed, eliminate the gender references to reflect today's workforce, uh, eliminate obsolete, um, date references and gender references regarding associate municipal court judges. Uh, we did specifically reach out to the municipal court judge for input, and they said, yes, that's fine. Um, update municipal code references. There's references throughout our code of a printed municipal code of 2000, but now we continually update our code and, and keep it, uh, updated through supplements and then online updates. I'd also refer to, um, just our printed code, but now, um, the majority of people access our code online, so we made updates to reference that. Um, one somewhat substantive change is, uh, time calculations. So our current code refers to a day as 24 hours, which it doesn't seem like that would be difficult to implement, but we run into several issues, and then municipal, um, the city clerk and I, um, discuss it almost every time this comes up, because let's say we serve a paper to someone, maybe an ejection or exclusion at 1:00 AM. On a 24-hour clock, their deadline to appeal that would be at 1:00 AM, uh, after three days. And so we've had a lot of discussions. Is the city clerk's office required to stay open until 1:00 again, 1:00 AM in case that person wants to walk in and hand deliver an appeal notice? Now, in practice, we've just extended the date to the next day to make sure that, that they can, uh, come in during office hours. But so that's been a significant issue for time calculation. So instead, um, we proposed to update that so that it's in days and the deadline ends by 5:00 PM, so that staff is required to stay to 5:00 PM for office hours when a deadline expires. And we also mirrored the time calculation under the Colorado Rules of Social Procedure. This is, of course, I'm a lawyer, so that's, um, one we know, um, because it governs timelines for lawsuits. Um, but it's also thoroughly vetted and fleshed out through case law and different rules and regulations, so it's very easy to follow and apply. Now, at the time we drafted this ordinance and, um, this PowerPoint, repealing the mayoral power to pardon, we considered a cleanup item, because we had never found where the mayor had ever actually exercised the power to pardon. Um, now our municipal charter, of course, states that, um, the mayor is a ceremonial figurehead, runs the meetings and signs our contracts with no additional power. So we didn't see that this aligned with our, our charter description of what the mayor does. Um, now since we considered this a code cleanup, drafted the ordinance and drafted this PowerPoint, the mayor has now exercised the power of pardon on, um, a, a building fine issue, permit issue. So now, um, I would consider this a substantive change that requires further discussion by council. So you can either have that discussion tonight, uh, or we can table this to give you time to think about if you want to make that substantive change, or you could move to just remove this altogether and just leave the mayoral, mayoral power to pardon in our municipal code as it currently exists. So it's been, um, kind of a funny thing that happened. It was a code cleanup, but now it's a substantive change that generally we would have given it more, um, thought and study time for council. And we also made a couple of tweaks and, and changes. For example, it says, um, the city manager, um, designated agenda functions. Um, it refers to the city manager's designate instead of information being provided to the city manager, um, which is our current practice. Uh, reflects, of course, the changes to the charter regarding the mayoral power to pardon. Um, and it also eliminates duplication, um, of the charter and Bob's Rules of Order. So our municipal code listed, for example, that a motion to adjourn may be made at any time. However, we've already adopted Bob's Rules of Order that specifically describes every action the city council takes and when it's appropriate. So, um, it was a, a bit conflicting, but, but predominantly duplicative, and therefore we don't want that duplication in code. And there was also, uh, regarding the city map, there were blanks regarding the city map functions, and it referred to the fact that the, uh, Public Works Director adopts the city map. And so we just made that clear, because it also had provisions that said, but city council could also adopt a map by resolution if it's fully destroyed. However, now we have our maps electronically, so a hard copy of a map being destroyed would not then invalidate it, because we have all of our backup electronic copies. So just an update there to reflect current technology. Okay, I have questions, but I'm going to back up to the mayoral pardon power, because I think that's, um, definitely something that requires significant discussion by council.
Thank you very much, City Attorney Niles. That's actually was an area that I wanted to start off, well, that I was gonna bring up, but I'm not gonna start there. But, um, any questions for members of council? Thank you very much for the presentation, by the way, so. Uh, go ahead, um, Councilmember Ward.
I'm curious how the decisions were made in the gender-related language cleanup. I've noticed that this methodology, substituting the pronoun they or their for the possessive pronoun, is different from the state drafting standard, which is to eliminate all pronouns.
So in general, that's what we try to do, um, make it gender silent, um, or just omit gender altogether. And generally, we try to just insert a title. For example, um, instead of referring to he, just say the city manager, because the city manager can, you know, um, not necessarily limited to a man in today's, um, day and age. Or not limited to a man, drop the N's, not necessarily. So, um, but there were times where it felt, um, that we couldn't easily drop in a title, um, or another name, so then we did substitute a they.
Yeah, when the state drafts, they don't use they, because they is a pronoun. They use the individual or the person, which is completely gender neutral and not to be confused with the plural as opposed to, or a non-binary choice of a person. Um, that would be my strong preference for our city code. I know that would require significant changes to this draft as it's written.
Uh, yes, and we could. For example, I just moved to section, um, one dash ten dash one, where it said something is issued by the director of the department or their designate. We can easily change that or to the director's designate.
That would be my preferred methodology. I can, I can send you a copy of the state drafting manual. Uh, I, I just looked it up. It's online, um, but that might be helpful, because it does have some specific guidance for substitute words. Um, the other thing was, I was just kind of glancing through the section with the changes in the mayor. And I, I don't know if I'm off my.
No, go ahead.
Uh, and I did see a reference to his or her in the section on the mayor. So I don't know if we captured all those, or the intent is to capture all of them throughout the changes we're making here. Um, but I would like to see consistency to the extent that we can knock this one out now. Um, I'll have to look back and see where the specific references, and I'll, I'll get that for you in a, in a minute. It's in the presiding, presiding officer section. The mayor shall vote on all questions, his or her name being called last. Page two eighteen of the packet. It's in one dash five dash two dash five. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, member Ward, member Pring.
Thank you. Um, I would like to offer, uh, a disagreement to what member Ward just offered. I don't think these changes are, um, a conversation about non-binary and pronouns, et cetera. I think it's appropriate changes to the times of how things are referenced, and we should keep the they and theirs. I don't think that one member of council should direct whether, whether that change is made or not. So potentially, we needed to have further discussion on whether those changes are appropriate or not. Um, I think that it just reflects current day practice, and it's appropriate to make these changes. Um, I also did, uh, notice one other area where, um, the, the word him was referenced, and that's in one dash ten dash one, under notices and manners of services, C three. It still has a him. Um, so, uh, I think that I agree with the consistency statement that member Ward stated, um, and we should change that if we're going to be consistent. And then I did have one question. Um, and I'm, apologize, I did not write down a specific section, but on page two twenty-one of our packet, I think under safety clause, I'm just wondering what does under the general police power mean? I'm not sure what that means.
Uh, so it means that the city council can adopt, um, rules, regulations and laws, um, to, for the general health, safety and welfare of the community. So generally, uh, we can include a safety clause. Um, it, well, this is basically saying that you have authority to adopt a law in this area, because you have what's called a general police power. Um, it could also be given to you specifically through charter, or through a statute, or through the constitution. But, um, if it's not specifically granted to, to the city under one of those specific grants of authority, then we call it the general police power. It, it's not related to policing or law enforcement in any way. So that's kind of, it's just a general statement that says, you have authority to adopt a law in this area, but it also specifically states, um, in that same section, that even though, um, you do have authority, that that doesn't mean that the citizens don't have a referendum right. So citizens can still challenge this through referendum.
Got it, that makes sense. Thank you.
Mayor Brotem?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, City Attorney Niles. Um, I did want to speak to the mayoral, uh, power pardon question, and I guess, uh, reviewing the charter in preparation for the meeting, you know, I, I didn't quite see how it conflicted with the charter, but I, since you put this together, I wanted to see what your best argument for, for why we should remove this.
Oh, it's not a specific conflict with charter. I mean, charter doesn't say the mayor cannot pardon, and then ordinance says that they can. Uh, it instead is that the charter generally describes what the mayor is, and that the mayor is just, just like another council member, except they preside over, um, council meetings, um, they sign contracts, they're a ceremonial figurehead. Uh, and so seeing that that's what charter says the mayor does, um, it, it just, the, providing this separate power that the mayor can override any law, single-handedly within the city, it, it doesn't seem to, um, be consistent with each other, but it's not as a direct conflict, no.
Okay, thank you. Member Wright?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, please. Um, I guess, like member Pring, and I believe member Ward, I saw his in a few different places. Um, one dash five dash two dash two, under special meetings, I see, um, his, um, in there. I guess one of my questions is, in our charter, on the first page, under number four, it says construction of words. And so in our charter, it says specifically, you know, his could be used, but it's meant to be feminine, um, not to be offensive to anybody. So maybe for all of us, you could explain what that, that is meant in the charter and the construction of words is meant, and why it was written? Because as far as I could look back, it was in the original charter and the purpose of that, and why we would want to change that from the original charter, because it sounds like they were thinking about the future when they wrote that.
Um, yes, the charter does say that. Um, since the charter was written, um, we did adopt, uh, the citizens adopted a charter amendment that said the charter shall be gender silent. And so then we went through the charter and removed all, um, gender and pronoun references. So for example, councilman became councilmember. Um, anything to, um, generally him or her, we just changed to the name of the title, like city manager. Came up a lot in the city manager sections, city attorney sections. So, um, in making these, um, proposed revisions to municipal code, it was to align with the will of the people as they amended the charter, but it's not required. Um, you, you can leave it as is. It's completely within council's discretion to, to leave those, um, pronoun statements or to, to leave everything as his. Completely up to you.
Okay, okay. And then I do have a question under one dash ten dash one, notices of manner of service. It says the consequences of, and then it's lined out, his, um, failure to comply wherewithin. So if we're taking out his and not replacing it with anyone, who gets the consequences with the new wording? Because under the new wording, it would be the consequences of failure to comply wherewithin.
Can you tell me, I'm sorry, could you tell me which subsection that is? I haven't.
I'm, I'm sorry. One dash ten dash one, notices of manner of service, and it would be number three, number four.
Uh, yes, so it's, I, I see it. Um, it's one dash ten dash one, C four. So it, it has the same, um, purpose and effect. So the his is just not necessary to be able to apply. So, um, the notice shall contain the consequences of failure to comply. Um, it doesn't have to say the consequence of his failure to apply.
Okay, so I'm not an attorney, and I'm not gonna act like one. So if someone didn't comply, an attorney could not wordsmith and argue, well, it didn't say who gets the consequences, therefore, nobody gets the consequences.
So this says, this is, um, describes what a notice is required to contain. So every notice that we serve is required to contain the name and address of, of who it served on, the purpose of the notice, the time, um, where they have to take an action, and then the consequences of failure to comply. So if you say you have to, um, let's say, fix your nuisance property within ten, ten days. If you don't comply with this notice, the city may prosecute you, or the city may fix it. So, um, it's, it describes the consequences of anyone's failure to apply with the directive as contained within the notice. So that's why we just crossed that one through, because. crossed that one through because it wasn't necessary.
Okay. And I have one more question. If we are going to current correct terminology, why would, as I know, the word secretary is no longer used. It's administrative assistant, executive assistant. Why wouldn't we not update that terminology?
In the, which section specifically?
It's still one dash ten dash one. It is under section F.
I specifically left that in there because a secretary can be a, a term for a corporate official. And so, we have places elsewhere in the code that refers to secretaries. It doesn't replace necessarily an administrative assistant. It also refers to a chief clerk. And so, I, I left that in intentionally in case, I didn't want unintended consequences where we omitted perhaps some sort of designated official or a secretary of a board or something like that because that's still considered an official position, but we certainly can remove it.
And I was just curious. So, couldn't it be chief clerk or designated official opposed to secretary?
We certainly could. And, and you know...
It's just a thought because I don't hear that term much anymore, so.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And one, I think you make a really good point. We could just put or their designee or the, or the, or their designee. Yeah, would, would work just fine as well.
Member Russell, yeah, I was gonna say. Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. One of the questions that I have on this, like, in relation maybe to changing time and, and some of these things that we would be changing, and, and I think you said in here also that certain years, that things would be changed, but then things may not be changed for several years. So, how, I mean, somewhat, there's a historical record here. If we make all of these changes and the red line goes away, how will we know when we made these changes and will there be a date?
Yes, because actually our ordinances are what create the historic record. So, we have every ordinance from the beginning of time that shows exactly every change we ever made to municipal code. So, that, that technically is our historic record kept in the city council records. And we have duplicate records, both in my office and the city clerks maintain those as well.
Okay, so that will be the record of those changes. Now, I'm going to take this to the situation with the mayor and the power to pardon. We may not have any records because you've said that you couldn't find any records of when it was ever used, but there is a historical reason that it was put in there in the first place. And I would like to suggest to you that it's not just, he's just a figurehead and he just does this and he does that, but we have the judge issuing decrees against people. And we've had a judge in the city, I remember going to traffic court in my twenties. I don't think, it wasn't for me. It was probably for somebody else that I was with.
For a friend.
Whatever that means. And so, there was a judge, I don't even know who the judge, who the judge's name was. I knew Vince Atencio, but if the judge made a ruling that there was no option for pardon, the mayor would have the power to pardon them. We also have in our, even in recent history, we've given the city manager a lot of power to do things and I believe that if the mayor judged that it was unfair, the mayor could pardon that person too. I, I think there are things in here that, I mean, how we used it, I don't know that that necessarily, it, it may have served the purpose and I wasn't opposed to it, but I do think there are some serious things that could happen. And any mayor that would make those decisions lightly, I think there are recourses to deal with a mayor if they've done that, especially once they're an elected position to. Well, their elected position, whether they're appointed, they, that situation could have been dealt with if they made it lightly or to help a friend or something. But I think there's a reason that it was put in there. I don't know if the Historic Preservation Society, you know, like Doug Cohen or, or maybe Matt Crabtree might have some history on that. I don't know. But I think that's something we could check on. But we will be able to keep track of a historic changes, right? Do we keep a copy of this once we change it?
Keep a copy of the municipal code?
Yes.
I believe the clerk's office maintains the copies of every code when it's changed, but I would ask the clerk to confirm.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further questions for our city attorney? Not, I think it might be best to just, haven't heard any discussion about tabling the items, but we'll, I'll ask for a motion and then we, we can have a discussion at that point. But can I get a motion on CB sixteen?
I move to approve CB sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. All right, further discussion. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I, I would like to make a motion to remove the repeal of the mayoral power to pardon.
Thank you, Mayor...
I would second that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and a second from Member Wright. All right. Any comments on this? And I'll, I'll, I'll speak to this, I'm sorry, Member Pring, did you have something or on this item?
Well, I, I'm not sure how to proceed, but...
So, we, so we're going to do each, each amendment, one by one. So, this was just going to be on the mayor, the repeal of the mayor power to pardon. And then if there's other items that we want, after we vote on this, then we'll have other items that we can say we want to keep or we want to remove from.
Okay, so can I just ask for clarification with the motion that's been made? Is it to approve this as presented tonight?
No. So, right now, we are just, the, the current vote, what we're going to vote on next is just what, we are going to repeal the, or we're going to remove the repeal of the mayor power to pardon, correct?
Yeah.
So, we want to allow...
Keep the mayor power to pardon. So, a yes vote on this would keep the mayoral power of pardon in our...
Yes.
In our ordinance.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll just provide a quick...
Yeah, go ahead.
...argument for it. You know, I do think it's something that is and should be rarely used, but it, you know, the, the case we had recently where you exercised that power, Mayor, I think we, you know, we, I think maybe we're close to unanimous on, on that being a good, you know, good use of that power. It does come up occasionally and I think it provides a good balance of powers between, you know, if we think of it as the administrative and the elected body and then, and then the judicial body. I think this is, this is a good example of where that balance of power can be used, can be useful. And hopefully, it will be very rarely used, but I do think when it comes up, it might be, might be helpful.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll weigh in as well. So, city attorney, I know that we tabled this item multiple times and so, we had this discussion about the power to pardon many months ago and I told you I was strongly in favor of removing that ability. And when this item came up, it, you know, and I asked you to look at different ways for us to do this without using the power of pardon. So, I just felt it was unfair to that homer that there was no other remedy for him in terms of an issue that was not really his doing. And so, in order for us to not allow him to get fined fees for something that was not his issue, the only way out was the power of the pardon. So, for me, I think those, those issues may come up again. So, for me, I will be in favor of allowing the right to power pardon in the future, so. All right, anyone else? All right, so, current motion on the table is the, to repeat, to, I'm trying to think. How's the...
To remove the repeal of...
Remove the, there we go. Remove the repeal, the mayor power to pardon. So, there we go.
That will keep, yeah, yes vote will keep the mayoral power of pardon.
It's only nine forty and I'm already having trouble speaking. So, I appreciate that, Mayor Protem. All right, so are we all clear on this? All right, city clerk, please vote.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Nay.
Member Pring?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Ciara?
Aye.
Let the record show, six eyes and one name.
Thank you. All right. Anything else from members of council? Member Pring, I saw your light on previously, but I'm not sure if you wanted to. Nope. Go ahead, Member Ward.
Because I brought it up, I would like to propose an amendment to the method of making the city code gender neutral to conform with the state legislative drafting manual, which uses title or a term other than a pronoun in order to make the code gender neutral.
Okay. Thank you, Member Ward. Could I get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any further comments on this item? Go ahead, Member Pring.
Yeah, I just am going to state my strong disagreement with this amendment. I don't think that this change has to do with, I don't think that we should, in our discussions about updating code, be having battles over our individual beliefs on pronouns. And I feel like that's what this is becoming. And I am fully in support of amending code to reflect current day practice of how things are referenced. And it shouldn't be about whether it, you know, non-binary conversations or he/him, theirs, or whatever. It's, it's a general term that's used to reference a person. And I think that it's mistaken to move in the direction of using titles and names of things when those things could ultimately change in the future.
Thank you, Member Pring. I'll just go good down the road because I didn't see who lit their light first. So, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I don't actually, I don't disagree with Member Pring. I don't think that, I wouldn't characterize this as a, like a DEI change or something like that. I think the English, English language has often, has long had a, a third-person singular they. So, I don't really have a big problem with it, but if it comes to conforming, you know, conforming to a more standardized practice, then I, I think I'm supportive of it to that extent, but not because I think there's something nefarious about having the, the they's in the code.
Member Noonan Camp?
I just want to clarify my support for this amendment, especially because I'm sensitive to Member Pring's comments. I, I don't view this as L being anti they/them pronouns. I actually view, you know, we're in a world where we have people who are using they/them, she/her, he/him. And because this is a recognized pronoun in our community, it's the same as saying she/her or he, he/him. And so, I would prefer to take all pronouns out of the code and go to the director or the, the title language because I do think sometimes using they in reference to either man or woman implies that it's only a man or woman. Doesn't actually acknowledge the people who do truly use a they/them pronoun. So, I actually am doing this in support of that. So, I, I, maybe we're coming at this from different angles and I know we're in a very semantic moment right now. I'm trying to figure this out, but I will be supporting this amendment because I think that it's actually more neutral for all gender. I get it.
Member Ward?
As usual, Member Noonan Camp phrased a sensitive topic more eloquently than I did. But I will say, you know, I, I do get uncomfortable when I feel like one of my peers is trying to climb inside my head and determine my motivation for my action. This policy or this procedure is what has been adopted by the Colorado General Assembly, who has some of the most experienced legislative drafters in the state of Colorado. It's an area that I have worked around for over a decade. And if this wasn't the way that they did it, I would not see myself introducing this particular amendment.
Member Pring?
Thank you. Just in response to that, I, I'm not trying to climb into anyone's head this evening. I just have strong beliefs around this. And I would like to point out that, Member Ward, when you first brought up your concerns about it, you did reference they/them being a plural like pronoun. And so, I, that leaves me to believe that you do have some sentiments around that. So, let's be clear with our speech if, if that's not what your intent was, but that's what I heard. I also find it interesting when we have many, many, many conversations on this council about home rule authority. And yet, now we're advocating for following the state's processes. And I, I find that a little disingenuous.
Thank you, Member Pring. Member Russell, I saw your light on.
I, actually, what Councilmember Pring just shared was the exact concern that I have is going back and deferring to the state rather than just doing it the way we've done it in the charter and the way we can do it now. I, I don't see a problem with that and I actually agree with Councilmember Pring on that particular aspect of it. Thank you.
Member Ward?
I want to address the home rule issue because another thing that raises my hackles is when people accuse me of logical inconsistency. Home rule involves a choice. And to the extent that I have advocated for home rule, I've always said I don't want the state legislature mandating policy for the city. But to the extent that they provide guidance on drafting that I find useful, I don't think that it's a violation of home rule to adopt that guidance. And I will apologize for using the term plural. You are correct. But I also did say non-binary in the, in the course of that as well, which is why I appreciate Member Noonan Camp putting it more eloquently than I did.
Member Wright?
I feel like I'm in a tennis match. I myself don't feel comfortable voting on something that I've not seen put in front of us. So, I have a difficult time voting on that where what city attorneys put together is a little bit easier to vote on. So, unless we have the documentation that Member Ward is talking about and where I could actually read it, I can't support it. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Member Wright. So, I guess I may be the tiebreaker on this and I'm not sure, but so, in terms of where I'm leaning, I'm going to vote to support this aspect of it. And I think part of the reason why is, well, there's several reasons why. One, I, I think it was mentioned earlier during public comment that I think Colorado is a progressive state. So, I, I do want to take that into account and believe that, you know, this has, those changes within the general legislature, that was standardized by the general legislature, I think brings me a little bit of, at least, I would be comfortable moving forward with, with what they potentially may be prescribing. The other aspect of it is that if this does pass, it will come to second reading. And so, if any changes or if anything comes up between the first and second reading that I just don't feel comfortable with, then I can easily make that change or make my decision heard during the second reading. So, I, I know it's a sensitive subject, but for me, I would be okay with it, but just knowing that I potentially can change my mind based on new information that we may receive before second reading if it comes to that. So, I will be in support. Anyone else? All right, with that, the motion on the table is to amend, to use the standardized form of the general, general state legislative body, general assembly. There we go. What was I saying earlier? It doesn't matter. There we go. All right, are we clear on what we're voting on, the members of council?
Ciara's not.
So, we're just standardizing the pronouns or the, the, not effective itself. All right. So, let's vote on...
Actually, I don't know that that's, that may be the ultimate goal, but that's not really what we're voting on. We're voting on using the state standardized...
Right.
Okay.
Correct. Did I just not state it?
When it comes to gender neutrality.
Yeah.
Just on gender neutrality. To the extent they provide guidance on gender neutral statutes, that's what I would like to use.
So, just specific on that one topic, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, city clerk, can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Pring?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Nay.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show four eyes in three days.
Thank you. Uh, any other items? Member Wright, go ahead.
I'd like to put a motion to table this until we have the new language written into the ordinance.
Thank you, Member Wright. So motion to table.
Second.
All right. And, Member Russell. All right. Any comments to motion to table this item to, is the date uncertain at this point? City Attorney Niles? How quickly can we get the information or?
Well, I've been making the changes as you've been making motions. So I think it'll be done by first thing tomorrow morning. So we could definitely put it on the next meeting.
Okay. So motion to table for April 21st. Is that okay?
Whenever City Attorney says until she has the wording updated and, and whatever corrections that we've pointed out to her.
Okay. So April 21st. All right. Um, anything to add? Mayor Potem, or are you just ready to vote?
Um, I was, I was going to add something.
All right, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'm going to oppose this just, just because we regularly make amendments to, you know, to ordinances as we're going. And I, I think that it would be, you know, be a waste of time to, to have this just come back as another, another ordinance when we can just make all the amendments right now.
Member Noonan Camp.
I am really sensitive to Member Wright's request, but I am also persuaded by the mayor saying that when we get this back on second reading, we can see the updated draft. Um, and we can make changes then if we need to. So I will also not be supporting, but understand the request. And if we weren't coming back on a second reading, I would vote to table.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Uh, I'll throw a curveball on this. I will be supportive of the motion to table. It does sound like there is information that is needed by members of council. So I will be in support of the motion to table to April 21st. So with that, can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson.
Nay.
Member Noonan Camp.
Nay.
Member Prang.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show five eyes and two knees.
Thank you so much. And thank you very much, City Attorney Tamara Niles. Um, I guess we're going to go to CB 21. So we'll bring you back for a second reading on the second item. So, thank you very much.
This one is mine as well.
It's down on the bottom of this one. So you're right. CB 18. Sorry, this is the municipal code cleanup to Title II. Um, City Attorney Tamara Niles.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I won't go through the background again. It's the same, same background that we had before. Uh, so we are proposing a cleanup to consolidate, um, which was Chapter I, into a separate section for each board and commission, and then a new Chapter II that's, um, policies and procedures applicable to all boards and commissions. Um, right now, we have a different chapter for almost every board and commission. Um, but Board of Adjustment and Appeals and Planning and Zoning were, uh, not in the original, um, title. And, and then there were some additional chapters that applied to all boards, but it wasn't clear what did and what didn't. So, um, we also saw that in a lot of the sections for each board, they duplicated, um, almost all of the same language that said, "Board members shall serve without compensation, but costs are reimbursable." Um, some of them said that board members serve at the pleasure of council, uh, but some of them omitted that altogether. And some of them said that boards have authority to create rules and subcommittees, and some didn't. So to, um, standardize them all, we put them all in a separate Chapter II where boards can just go, okay, what are the policies applicable for all of us? Okay, our chair and vice chair serve for two years, and we serve at the pleasure of council. So it's much easier for our board liaisons and our board members to find those policies that apply to every board. Uh, so for, um, the general reorganization, Board of Adjustment and Appeals was previously omitted from this Title II altogether. We propose adding it in. Um, it is a charter-created board, but charter doesn't really describe what its duties are. Its duties are elsewhere in code. So because charter didn't really lay out what it does, we recommend adding it into the Title II as a listed board, giving it its own, um, its own section. Now, I, I think we'll go into this in a minute. We're not recommending the same thing for planning and zoning, but that's a discretionary call for council. Um, we also added a duty to BAC to reflect what its current duties are, um, to monitor ballot authorized tax benefit improvements. It's currently doing that for the 2023 approved sales tax projects. Uh, and then we also codify language that is included in the, um, city council appointment, uh, resolutions for board members that says the, um, above alternate members may be elevated to a full, uh, voting member if there is a vacancy. And that's to ensure that the, um, board still have quorum and can still operate. So we, um, recommend rather than just having that in the appointment resolution, uh, also insert it into municipal code. So it's clear for, again, board members and liaisons, they can easily find that. And before we made any of these recommendations as well, we did contact each one of the board liaisons, um, sent them a copy of the proposed revisions, asked for comment, uh, and any objection. And so what's proposed for you today, they all felt like were, were cleanups too with some, some general tweaks, but nobody had any objection to these changes. Um, now, we did codify though that, um, and this is in there, that council appoints vacancies. So if there's no, um, alternate to elevate, um, to fill a vacancy, that's still council's prerogative. Uh, so PNC is not currently in the Boards and Commissions title, and we didn't insert it into this cleanup ordinance. And that's because, uh, our charter thoroughly details what PNC does. And so if we were to include it in our municipal code, it would simply be a duplication from the exact wording of charter into the exact wording of municipal code. We try not to include just specific duplication from charter to code. But if council does want to include that to make sure every single one of our boards and commissions is in this title, we certainly can add that in. Uh, then we also have some consistency updates, revised language and formatting to be consistent among all boards. Um, and irony reference, revise the chair and vice chair terms to two years. Some of our boards say the term should be one year, some say two years. So that was one thing that I really discussed with the board liaisons. I guess, is this okay? Will this cause any problems if we make it the same citywide, just two years? And the consensus was it's easier for them, especially the ones that have multiple boards that they, uh, attend and take minutes for. It's easier for them to keep track of because it's consistent. Uh, we also tweaked it a little bit to say the quorum is a majority of then appointed members. And, uh, we, we used to have a bigger issue with this where, um, we would have, maybe we couldn't fill boards or we had some resignations. So boards simply couldn't meet because they didn't have enough members to, to meet a quorum. So this would allow boards to still meet and conduct business until city council can appoint those vacancies. And let's say there's, um, I don't know, we used to have an issue with the library board. We don't anymore. But, um, so the library board could still meet, give the library, uh, director, um, guidance and direction even while city council was working to fill vacancies. Okay. And on this one, um, the planning and zoning is, is really the one that, um, I would like direction from council if you want to include that in Title II, um, because that's a discretionary call for council.
Thank you, City Attorney Niles. Any questions? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Um, I actually have, um, my questions are, what about Water and Sewer Board? What about the Public Library Board? What about the Board of Adjustment and Appeals? All of these boards are also detailed in the charter itself. So what's the difference between those and, um, planning and zoning?
Uh, two differences, um, which are why we didn't include it. Um, all those boards, except for, um, Board of Adjustment and Appeals, have always been in municipal code already. Um, so that, the decision was made before us to include those in our code sections on boards and commissions. And PNC is different in that our charter provides line by line by line, just thorough detail on what PNC does, and more so than, than the other boards that are created by charter. But you're right, those are the four that are created by charter.
And, and then, when you talk about appointing the chairman of the board for one year and... Or was it two years?
Uh, two years.
Two years, and then two terms, two consecutive terms. Okay, but still, even the Water and Sewer Board, they have six-year terms, and they would change the chair three times in that six, well, not six times probably, but at least two different people. And I mean, I know it's a long time, um, but I don't think, this came up at the Water and Sewer Board last month. Um, I think they do it when they feel like it. It was something to that effect, wasn't it? Um, because...
We may have to look at that process. I, I think it's supposed to be at, at specific intervals, but I'm, I'm happy to take a look at their, their bylaws.
Okay, because that would help. And when, we meet tomorrow night, right? Okay. We may not have that answer by tomorrow night. So, um, and then, let's see, was there, um, what about the unintended consequences of these changes? By changing this chapter itself, what might be the unintended consequences? And we might not know until we start experiencing them.
So, so most of it is, is just cleanup, um, standardization and cleanup. For example, taking out, um, from, uh, from Water and Sewer Board specifically that, um, city council may remove board members. So by taking it out of there and instead saying for all boards, city council may remove board members, there's no impact on Water and Sewer. It's, it's the same provisions. It's just put in a different section to, to say this applies to every board, not just Water and Sewer. So we, we are not anticipating unknown unintended consequences on these because we're not, um, proposing substantive changes that would have those unintended consequences.
And I guess my other question is the same as on the last one. Um, will there be a loss of historical information that occurs when we make these changes?
Um, so I'll, I'll just repeat. We do keep every ordinance from the city. Um, as you can, you have the ordinance in front of you. So you see line by line what's changed because the ordinance shows what's crossed through and what's underlined to ensure we have a full historic record. In addition, the city clerk indicated that she does keep a copy in her records of every municipal code we have. So that's also an additional record. And of course, I keep a copy of every ordinance as well. So we have some overlap there.
Okay. And what about bylaws for each of these individual boards? Because most of them make up their own bylaws, correct?
Uh, some do, some don't, um, have bylaws. Um, but we specifically included every board may make their own, um, rules and regulations, um, which, which is a nod to every board can adopt their own bylaws. So generally, they have to apply with the directive of council as contained within ordinance or municipal code. But if council doesn't say you can't do it, or you must do something, um, then they have discretion to, to change it in their own bylaws.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Prang.
Thank you. Um, I do have a handful of comments slash questions on this. Um, so I do appreciate the, um, the movement of kind of the generalized things that apply to all into its own section. Um, I think we hit the mark well in, in changing up that section. Um, I guess I just feel like there are substantive changes that are being made in this. Um, just how things are organized and laid out. Um, and I'm not sure that we hit the goal of providing clarity and ease of understanding. And the reason that I say that, um, is because of the existing inconsistencies that are still present in how this is laid out. Um, I think this is a situation where duplication potentially is appropriate. I think that, you know, it's very important to us as a council to have people interested in and applying for boards and commissions. Um, so I don't want to have a scenario that says we're not going to put all of the, the information, the same information for each board and commission altogether here in code because maybe it's laid out in detail in charter. And then we're expecting people to go to several different places to get all of the information that they need, or whole information to make decisions. Um, so for me, i- if I'm feeling a challenge with that, I'm assuming that residents who may be looking for information and are lucky enough to figure out where to find it, I just don't want them to have to go to several places. Um, I, I also feel like every section, I just want this to look cleaner. I want every board and commission to have, um, you know, a section on membership. I want every board and commission to have a stated purpose. And I want every board and commission to have powers and rights. And, and so if we are, if we do have certain boards and commissions that are laid out in detail in charter, um, then maybe we abbreviate those sections, but we've got consistent sections that are listed for each. For me, when I read through this, I just, how the information is presented is still kind of hodgepodge. It's, um, you know, some of them have like a paragraph that's talking about membership, but even, even with, um, the membership pieces of it, in some places it says composition and membership, others say makeup of the board, or mem-, or, um, in other places say membership and terms. Um, so even with just talking about membership, we have three different things that it's called. So I, I don't know what the right action at this point is. I know that we've already tabled it once, but I would rather have this sent back and reworked before it comes to us for an official vote, just to, to get at that clarity and, and ease of understanding that we state we're, we're doing with this project. Um, and to have it just be really consistent throughout and, and clear to everyone.
We'll go Member Wright and then Member Wright.
Thank you. Member Wright, Member Wright.
Um, I saw Member Russell had her light on the entire time, but she turned it off.
Oh, thank you. Um, I agree with Member Prang. I know a lot of work has gone into this, and I appreciate it. I would prefer that the charter and the munich code, um, match each other in consistency. Not everybody is a wizard when it comes to the internet and is able to ch-ch-ch, and pull up and find everything, either in the charter or in munich code. I tend to look under munich code for things that I'm looking for, and then I go to the paper charter that you nicely provided me when I'm looking for other stuff. Um, and I think that we need to be mindful of that. One thing that I would love to see also is it listed, um, where, if a board is quasi judicial. Um, and so people know why a city council member is not a liaison or not. Um, and I think that's important because people question, why is a council member not there? And I think that's something that we could add. I, I know that this isn't a study session, but I think, I guess, is this appropriate to do a motion to table so we could do some updates? I know that we're discussion right now, but, and Member Russell had something to say, but that's just another suggestion I have.
There's currently not a motion on the table, but, um, so, I guess I would say if you wanted a motion to table.
I, I would like to, um, make a motion to table to do some of the suggestions that Member Prang and myself have made.
Date uncertain?
Yes. She needs some time on this one.
Thank you.
I would second that. I wanted to discuss a little bit.
Okay. I think we could probably still have a little bit of discussion, but...
Okay.
But, so you're the second, Member Russell, date uncertain, motion to table.
Yes.
Okay.
So I actually, Member Prang brings up some really good points. And, you know, even putting them in alphabetical order, and actually both in the munich code and the charter, but I think what is interesting, on the website too, because sometimes it's difficult to find this information on the website. It used to be easier to find the list of all of them. Um, I don't know what, what's changed there, but if we could make everything consistent, it would be much easier for the public to understand and find information.
It just so happens I pulled up that list on the city clerk's website. Um, we, we were talking about the new ERP board and putting it on. So I, I just was looking at it. They are making updates to it. Um, so this is the time for them to, to look at that. Um, so I know the person that's working on it, uh, behalf of the clerk's office is here. So, um, should be sure to include that, and I'll talk to her about it as well.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Potem.
Hey, Mayor. I, um, I guess my concern about tabling this is...
I guess my concern about tabling this is around getting, making sure the city attorney has clarity on direction from council for the whole, the code cleanup project as a whole. If, you know, if this is what we're, if what we end up wanting is something more detailed, then my understanding of this code project would be more deleting, you know, cleaning up inconsistencies between different portions of code and clarifying, you know, clarifying stuff that's not clear. I think it's a slight, it might be a slightly different project to, you know, to go through this whole section and expand and make sure everything's include, you know, everything's included, all that, that kind of thing. And if we start doing that with each of these code cleanup as they come up, I'm afraid we're going beyond our original intention. If we want to change the plan and go more in depth on the code cleanup, I'm fine with that. But I think there's value to just a cleanup where you remove the inconsistencies in the code, knowing that you're leaving behind something that still could use some more work. And that's the only concern I have about taking this approach on this one, is that it'll continue to compound.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm actually in the same boat. So for me, I think the larger discussion is whether or not we need, we want to move forward with the actual code cleanup itself. Because I really didn't intend this for, at least from my perspective, I did not intend this to be such a big project for you city attorney when there's so many other things that are going on in the city that I want to bring your focus back to. Instead of having, instead of trying to get our code back into a state where it's becoming a bigger project. So for me, like, the intention was to remove the inconsistencies with charter, just do some simple cleanups. But now it feels like potentially it could go down the path that we're asking for, you know, more of your time to actually do the, what maybe, what potentially may be being asked of you in terms of just providing better clarity within the code itself. So for me, if we're moving to table this, I feel that I may now be in a position where I'm asking that we, as a council, or I'll be asking the council that we don't move forward with any further code cleanup, because I think it's going to take a lot more of your time than I originally intended. So, that's kind of where I stand. But, Member Prang, go ahead, your lights on.
Yeah, I hear your point and Mayor Protem, and I think they're fair points. And I also feel that if we're going to do the work to clean up code, let's do it right the first time. And so for me, I don't like using the city attorney's time to make a couple of word changes and not kind of address, I just want it to look professional and consistent. And I don't feel like how it's laid out right now looks that way. And so I just, I have a little bit of a hard time with, let's do kind of this cutesy little cleanup and have our city attorney spending her time to do that versus digging in. And if we need to have a study session on particular sections that we're updating, then let's do it. If it's really just a couple of word changes and strike-throughs, I see that being very appropriate to be brought forward in the fashion that these two are. I just think that these two that we're looking at tonight did get a little sticky and maybe could have, you know, we could have warranted having a study session to have the conversation on it. But if we're going to do something as important as cleaning up our code, let's do a good job of it, a thorough job of it, once. Versus doing like this, you know, sweep-through of the low-hanging fruit, and then hoping that someday we're going to come back and create a new project where we're getting it done in a thorough manner.
Member Russell, go ahead.
Actually, I kind of, when I was reading these code cleanups and the trouble that we've had with them, I'm in the position where the mayor is, for the most part, that this is something, we're working on changing the muni code. It impacts the citizens. It has to be an open and transparent process because this is law, and this is what the citizens will have to operate under as well as us. And what I've realized is this council has a lot on our plate, and we get to it, and then we're looking into it a little more and things get tabled. I'm kind of where you're at right now. I think maybe we have more important things to deal with. But I also would not like to stop this on the boards and commissions. We're to this point now, I would like to see this one get done. Thank you.
Member Ward?
I'd like to hear the city attorney's opinion of what path forward might be advisable. And to the extent that you've already embarked on this project, how you think it's gone so far? Because I think one of the challenges here is honestly the unpredictability of this body. When you bring us something, you don't always know how we're going to react to it when it comes forward. So, what would you say would be the path forward in light of how much time you've already invested on this project?
We have spent significant time on it, and money, too. I mean, we paid an outside contractor, I think at $12,000 for this project so far. So, I don't generally start anything that I don't finish. So, but ultimately, and so every time I see something that has an out, a wrong date or something like that, I cringe a little bit inside and think, we're going to fix that. So, I support the project, but ultimately, I take my direction from council. You set the policy at the city, and you tell me what to do. So, I will take my direction from you, and if it's time, we will make time to get it done. Of course, we are short-staffed, so it may take us a bit longer than we anticipated. But, and I completely agree with Councilmember Prang. I think we do it once and we do it right. My same philosophy for remodeling a house, so I say it a lot. So, I support that, and I'm willing to do whatever it takes to get it right. But certainly not at council's expense. If you feel like you have higher priority items that you need to focus on, we can table this and come back to it even with a new council after the November elections. Completely up to you.
I think, in that case, I'm headed in the same direction as Member Prang. You know, a more comprehensive, collaborative approach with council where we can talk through some of these things in study sessions and get them piece by piece, but get it done comprehensively and get it done well the first time, I think, would be what I would prefer.
Mayor Protem?
Would it, if we're going to go that route, are we going to need to spend more time, more on outside council to move this forward? Or is this something you think you have the resources in-house to do?
Right now, we have the resources in-house. Because I'm working on this directly. But it is an election year, and you never know what will happen. So, that could change at any time. Because when there's an issue that comes before council, especially election-related, I drop everything else and then reprioritize.
Okay. All right. Member Noonan Camp?
I'll just weigh in, since council's having a conversation on this. And so I think we've invested the funds, I don't want to lean into the sunk cost fallacy, but we haven't made this investment. And I would appreciate, as we move this forward, understanding what are the ones that are the most significant? The things that I think would have the most impact in cleaning up the code and engaging that way? And I just want us to be careful that, I think we should do it well, but we should not focus on doing it perfectly, because this could suck up all of our time, and we could continue to make a bunch of changes back and forth. And when we think about all of the challenges in the city for staff and for council, this for me is not my, not the highest priority. I think it is valuable, but I think that we should spend the time and energy on it that has commensurate with its impact on our citizens. And I do not think this is the highest impact on our citizens for their quality of life. And so I would like us just to keep that in mind going forward.
All right, so we have a motion on the table to table to date uncertain. So, all right, can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
What is the vote again? I'm sorry.
Table.
To table, yeah.
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, city attorney and ailes. You'll be back here in a couple of items. So, up next is CB 21. We have Executive Director of Inwood Downtown Development Authority, Hillary Portell, here to discuss the South Broadway Design Guidelines for downtown Inwood. Good evening, Hillary.
Good evening. I do not have a presentation for tonight. I'm here with the lead consultant on the design guideline project, Chaney Bostick of Studio Seed. We're standing by if you have any questions this evening.
All right, members of council, I believe we had the study session, what was it? Two weeks ago? Was it two Mondays ago, or three Mondays ago, I guess, since we had the fifth Monday? So any questions regarding the design standards? Go ahead, Member Russell.
I did have one question, and I asked one person tonight. You probably maybe have the answers, or maybe the city attorney. Why were not the design lines laid out in the ordinance itself?
The ordinance was drafted by the city attorney's office, so I'll defer to Tamra this evening. Is that okay?
Yes, I'm happy to take that one. It's because the design guidelines are a very well-designed graphic packet, so they're adopted by reference, and they are in the packet. So it refers to the South Broadway Design Guidelines, all in capitalization, that are approved and adopted, and then they are right behind the ordinance in your packet. I believe it's a PowerPoint, and then those design guidelines.
Okay, right, that was in there. But so that is actually going to be the law. And staff will administer that uniformly with every person that comes. Is that a possibility?
So, I'm hesitant to call it the law, because all they are are guidelines. So we actually debated it internally. Should this just be a resolution? Because they're not necessarily binding. They say that staff shall use them, that they shall discuss them, that... But they're not, they don't tell developers, for example, you have to do this, or you can't do that. They are simply a guideline for use in looking at permits and design plans, so that we have a cohesive and updated, uniform design for the area.
But don't ordinances generally have a general penalty clause? And ordinances are law, correct?
Not necessarily. Because ordinances also, for example, adopt contracts that don't create a criminal penalty in response. So this was a debate we had as to, should it be an ordinance or simply a resolution? But because we are adopting by reference the guideline, much like we would adopt by reference a fire code, for example, or a building code, we felt it was more consistent with past practice in the city to adopt it by reference as an ordinance.
And that has been my struggle this time. I mean, when I read through it, I just thought, I'm struggling with the fact that it's an ordinance, and, but it's not binding, really.
I can tell you, I have, I had the same position, and I made my staff convince me otherwise. So I kept saying, why isn't this a resolution? Why isn't this a resolution? So we had a lot of discussions, and finally, they convinced me because, to make it consistent and something that staff clearly could utilize and show developers that adopting it by ordinance also gives it more gravitas.
So we do have another question. What about adaptable reuse? I mean, I would think, I will tell you, when we were driving home from Texas, we drove through the town of Fredericksen and Fredericksburg. It is a huge town. It has the original main street, and it is, there were so many tourists in that town. And I just thought, this is what Inglewood looked like before we changed Broadway. And, but adaptive reuse would be far more than tearing down what we have and rebuilding. But it values both equally. Is that correct?
The design guidelines strongly encourage adaptive reuse. We'd like to see that. It's really aimed, for the most part, at large investment coming in from outside of the community. You know, somebody who does want to renovate an older building or build something new. And just trying to provide some guardrails here so that the sense of place and the authenticity and the, what people like the most about South Broadway can be retained.
Thank you, then.
Can I add to that? Most standards in the code are written for new development. When you write a new code or update a new code, you're thinking about new development and not existing buildings. And therefore, guidelines, essentially, I've been doing this for 20 years, and often, we're working in historic districts. Although you don't have one, they very, very often have their own set of design guidelines for this very reason, because the code is written for new development, not for historic buildings. And so this additional level of guidance is to really speak to that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Actually, real quick, Ms. Bostick, did you want to introduce yourself and...
Yeah, sorry, I'm Chaney Bostick with Studio Seed. I was the lead consultant, working for the EDDA on this project.
Thank you, Chaney. Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess I want to follow up on Member Russell's questions. If an applicant comes in for a permit and they go through this process and they decide they don't want to, don't want to comply with these, is there, is the permit withheld? Is there a penalty associated with it? I mean, this is, this is where I think the crux of it is in terms of, I mean, are they actually enforced? Are we requiring these? I know there's some flexibility in them, and staff can say, yes, this meets the universal signage, you know, requirement for what you're doing here. And that may vary from project to project, but is there teeth to it?
Brian, do you want to address that?
Brian, I'm Planning Manager. The whole intent with the guidelines written the way that they are is so that there's a negotiation between staff and the applicant, and that we don't end up in that result. Although if we do, the building permit would be withheld, and then the appeal process that's written out for, depending on what type of development application is being sought. So if it's a site plan, site improvement plan, they would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an appeal, for the non-approval of a site plan. Or if it's a building permit, they would go to the Board of Adjustment for an appeal.
Because this is different than what we have in Titles 16 with, you know, dimensional requirements that you can, you can look at those and say, yes, they either are, you know, this is a yes or no, for most of the requirements in Title 16. This is more, you know, staff saying, does this, you know, does this meet the intent? And the, you know, the applicant making their case that, yes, this keeps the, you know, consistency with the other buildings, that kind of thing. Is that correct?
Sure. So Title 16 has very measurable standards. So transparency, you have to do X percentage on each type of building wall, depending on what street you're facing. But it also has a lot of flexibility built into administrative adjustment procedures. You have variance procedures, you have the PUD procedure. This offers flexibility in just a totally different setup. Instead of being built-out standards, we have guidelines that we can be flexible with, as long as we agree. And staff, and the administration of these, we would work very closely with the DDA director to make sure that it meets the intent of what we're trying to get before we move forward with approvals.
Okay, thank you.
Member Ward?
So if I heard you correctly, and I think we talked a little bit about this during the study session, we're providing a bit of a framework, but the enforcement of the framework that we're providing is largely discretionary and administrative staff function. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further comments? Or questions, I should say. If not, can I get a motion to approve CB 21?
So moved.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. Any further comments? Mayor Protem and then Member Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm supportive of these design guidelines tonight. The broader kind of concern I have with downtown is, what I like about this is it's moving towards the direction of kind of, very consistent with like a form-based type code. But then we have, we still have a whole bunch of requirements in Title 16, including, you know, parking requirements and the dimensional requirements, of course, and then a variety of use, you know, use-specific requirements that come along with that. And what I'm, what I'd like to address in the long term is... to address in the long term is, how can we make sure that our code is flexible enough that somebody can come in and follow these design guidelines, plus the dimensional requirements, but not be caught up with, "Oh, I have 100, you know, 3,000 square feet of restaurant space, so I need to provide, you know, 18 parking slots," however many, you know, however many that amounts to, and then it makes it impossible for somebody who wants to redevelop the site, when a lot of the buildings we have along there wouldn't be able to be built with requirements that are currently in our code. And what we love is what we have, and we want more of it. And so, I think the problem, you know, what I was wrestling with in the study session is, here's another, you know, here's another requirement that they have to meet. But I think the problem is actually more in Title 16, that if we're going to create the kind of flexibility where we want to, if somebody comes along and says, "Well, this building's getting old," it would be cheaper, and we could build something more beautiful if we just tore it down, but then they don't, because, "Well, currently, we have three parking spots, and if we tore it down, we'd have to build 12 parking spots for the same exact use." And so, you don't get that redevelopment that I think would be really lovely in the long term to get. So, that's really, it's kind of a separate issue, but I think it's kind of entangled in that we're adding another requirement here, but really, you know, this one, I don't think is going to be the problem requirement for continuing to see our downtown updated. And I would really like to think, you know, have the DDA think through those things. What are some targeted changes we can make in Title 16 to make sure we can allow for that redevelopment while keeping the consistency along the business district there in the long run?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Member Wright?
Thank you so much. I guess this has moved in the right direction. I've received call after call in support of this. The biggest concern that I've received is they don't want historical buildings knocked down and have multiplexes built. There are other words added in there, but I won't repeat them. And I agree with that completely. As part of those conversations also, the businesses that are there, and I think I raised this, was being told what to do with those buildings if they're going to restore them, and I agree with that also. I think this is a start. I've heard from many people saying that this has baby teeth, and maybe we need more teeth in it moving forward. My biggest issue with it, and I said it at the study session, is people being told what color to paint their buildings, and we need to preserve those buildings. I hope this is a start. We do not want multi-unit buildings going down on South Broadway, knocking down historic buildings. And I think, hopefully, in the future, we're going to look into how we could pursue those buildings even more. So, I do believe this is a start, and we can move forward, and I appreciate all the work that has been done into this. So, thank you for all the work everybody has done.
Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just weigh in and say, I'm very excited to support this tonight. Thank you to the EDDA for all the work that they did on it. And I, too, received a lot of citizen input, a lot of citizen feedback tonight, and over the last few weeks since we've been having this conversation. And the reason I'm so excited to support this is specifically to what actually Member Russell was bringing up about, how do we get our downtown to feel like a historic downtown? And it's what's in the design standards, and actually, we had a citizen give us a handout tonight that elevated the exact same thing that I think is really compelling, where the standards actually say that the preference is to always restore notable and historic buildings, to revitalize them, and it says, in the standards, it says to identify, reveal, restore any original or significant architectural features or historic facade elements that contribute to the character and identity of a building. And if you can't restore those, then you should reconstruct those significant features in that traditional design. That's exactly what we're going for right now. We don't have those kinds of protections, and I'm really excited to support this, because I think that it serves not only our history, but also our future. So, thank you guys so much.
Member Ward?
I also want to acknowledge the work of the DDA on this. I heard from some stakeholders, a number of them, but one in particular, who was brought in on this process to provide some specific guidance regarding accessibility standards in this area. And that was very important to that person, and has been for quite some time, and her feedback was very useful to me in considering the project overall. So, I want to thank the DDA for the work that you did to ensure that this was a collaborative process, and that the stakeholders in the area who would be affected by any regulation that we might pass were really brought in and consulted, and I can see that in the product. So, I will be supporting this tonight. I think it strikes a proper balance between actual bona fide regulation and suggestion, and provides adequate flexibility to ensure that we can develop this area in a manner that's beneficial to the population. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Prang?
Thank you. Want to thank Member Noonan Camp also for articulating something much better than I could have. You said it very well. I think that, I absolutely am a strong supporter of this tonight. One of the things that I love best about this project is the unifying of voices within our community. This project in particular, of anything that I've worked on, on council so far, has brought such strong support amongst very, very different voices and groups across the city, and I think that that's really significant. So, thank you for bringing this forward. I definitely think it aligns us with cities across the state, and what people are doing, and industry standards, and how we get things done. And I also think the chamber, in their letter of support, you know, really spoke to this just aligning with our vision for the area, and this accomplishes that. So, very happy to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been said tonight. Ms. Bostic, thank you very much for all the work that you put into this, Ms. Portell, DDA, you know, Member Ward kind of brought up the collaborative effort. You guys have done this with every single project, and just making sure all voices are heard, and that what our vision is will meet the accessibility needs of everyone within our city. So, I just really appreciate it. It's what our vision is from the DDA, as well as from the city, I guess to a large extent of what we're trying to accomplish within the three areas, the three subareas, and I will be a strong supporter of this, and just thank you very much again for all the work that you put into this. So, thank you. With that, can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you very much. Seven oh. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Moving on to CB 7, City Attorney Tamara Niles, to discuss code cleanup on current city departments. Ms. Niles, do you have anything else to add? I know this is the second reading, but...
No, Mayor, this was adopted on first reading, I believe unanimously, so it was originally set for consent agenda, but Councilmember Wright had a question about when the city manager has used the temporary reorganization process. That was submitted as a response to a council request, and so...
That's correct.
I would take any questions you have.
All right, perfect. Any further questions? We received an answer, but is there anything else that you want to add on that, or...? Okay. All right. Any further questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve CB 7?
I'm moved to approve CB 7.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. Any further comments? All right, seeing none, can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
City Attorney, thank you very much. All right, moving on to general discussion, mayor's choice. All right, couple of items. Let's start off with the first one. So, attached to the agenda is a letter supporting just an application for an Arapahoe County Open Space Grant. So, just wanted to bring to your attention, just wanted to see if anyone on council had an issue with this, but if not, we will go ahead and just submit the grant, but just wanted to bring it to your attention before we did so. All right. Go ahead, Member Wright.
Why are we doing this during mayor's choice, when we've done it during regular council normally?
I think, well, I think we've done it both ways in the past, but I think for this specific item, I just mentioned that it's an open space grant, it's just the application itself, so just put it on mayor's choice for this item. So, that was the reasoning behind it.
Okay.
All right, so no disagreement. All right, perfect. So, that's one. Before we get to the larger item, let me just, real quick, just make a reference that there is going to be a special meeting next Monday, April 14, next door in the community room, due to there being an executive session. So, I just want to make everyone aware, executive session next Monday nights could be a special meeting next door in the community room. So, City Attorney Niles, did I cover everything in there? Oh, it's 6:00 PM, and it'll start at 6:00 PM, the meeting would. So, forgot the time. All right, all right, moving on to the next item, voting system for elected mayor. So, I know, so this was an item that we brought up, when was that? Was that two weeks ago? I'm trying to think. So, no, we brought it up last Monday night, or two Mondays ago. So, we brought it back up. We had six members of council available for that study session two Mondays ago. There wasn't clear consensus on which way to move forward. I wanted to bring it back for a discussion at this point. There will be no decision tonight, just a decision on whether or not to put this on a future item for the council to vote on. So, this is only going to be a discussion, trying to get a majority on a specific item, and then at a future council meeting, we will then vote on the item. So, there's several choices on the voting system. I was under the impression that we most likely were not going to be moving forward with ranked choice voting. I think part of the reason why it's still on there is that we drafted this originally as part of the original discussion, as part of the different options. From our discussion two weeks ago, I think ranked choice voting was out, but obviously, I'll let members of council decide on that. But for me, I think that that was one item that no longer needed to be considered, but there's obviously a couple of other items there. But I'll open it up to members of council in terms of just how to move forward with this, but... Mayor Potem, I'll let you start off.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I'll jump in first here, since I missed the study session. I didn't mention at council member's choice, the week before the study session, kind of some of my opinions on it, but having heard, I went back and watched the study session, and it sounded like the way council came out on that is, at least perhaps three, without me interested in doing, I think runoff seemed to have the highest level of support, the runoff election, which is what I support as well, and doing it either in a special election, or possibly even on the November ballot. I'm supportive of either of those. I think either one will, you know, will get the job done and allow the citizens to make the decision.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Member Noonan Camp?
I have a question. City Attorney, can you remind me, if we were to just ask the traditional runoff question, and we asked it on the November ballot along with the mayor's race, could it be implemented in time? We talked about this. Can you remind me?
Yes. I did an initial legal analysis and determined it could be. It could be a November ballot question, and then apply to the mayor's race in November. But then I reached out to our outside elections council, asked him to analyze it as well, and he confirmed he did recommend that if we do put it on a November ballot, then in all of our candidate packets, provide information on it, say this will be on the November ballot. You may or may not have a runoff if someone in November doesn't get a 50% majority, and just so everyone runs their campaign and runs their race, knowing a runoff is a possibility, and no one's surprised.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did not hear your question.
I asked that if we put the runoff question on the November ballots, not a special election, and with the same election as the mayor election, would that apply then to the immediate mayor? So, everyone runs for mayor in November, if no one gets a majority, then the runoff would immediately take effect if the voters pass it in November.
So, I'll ask the question that I think everybody's still here for. Why? Why are we doing this? We had, let me see if I wrote it down. We had 28 speakers, if I counted right. 21 of those 28 speakers, and I believe, in my tenure on council, which is well over a year now, said, "We do not want our elections changed." So, my big question is, first of all, who's driving this? And second of all, why are we changing things? Why?
Do you want me, I could be the first person to speak up on this. So, this has been a discussion that we've been having for over a year. So, if you remember, last year, we started having a conversation regarding ranked choice voting. And the reason why we were having a conversation regarding ranked choice voting was because there were citizens within the community that wanted us to look into ranked choice voting. So, when you look at...
Mayor, I have a plate order. I'm sorry, the members of the audience.
Yes, members of the audience, please. Let me just finish my thought. If you could keep the comments to yourself. If you do interrupt again, I will ask you to leave. So, ranked choice voting is my preferred method, but I think people are very clear in terms of what was voted on in November, that it just wasn't something that the state of Colorado wants to move forward with as a whole. So, I am fine with that, but the ranked choice voting, what I like about the aspect of it is that it does provide the citizens, the elected officials, the majority of the elected, excuse me, elected officials get a majority of the vote in order for them to serve within the city council. So, I think for me, when you are representing the community, a majority of the citizens want you in that seat. I think it's important, not only for mayor, I think it is important for city council members as well. So, I know the comment has been brought up tonight, that why are we only talking about it for mayor? For me, ranked choice voting, like, the whole point was for everyone to be part of it, but we're not talking about ranked choice voting. That's not going to be the aspect of it that I'm interested in. So, for me, I think a runoff does make sense for the city. I would be in support of it. I will be in support of it for a November election. I think it's been clearly brought up by members of the community tonight, that one of the struggles that I had was just a special election just would cost $125,000, or whatever it happens to be, anything north of $80,000. So, for me, I do want to put it to vote for the citizens. If they decide in November that they want to move forward with it, then that's, you know, the citizens decided. It's just the same as the citizens voted to have their voices heard in terms of who the mayor is. So, for me, I would like to put it to the citizens' vote. I'd like to do it for November. I'm not interested in a special election, but I would be interested in a November election. So, that's my big point. I'll let other members of council provide their response, if they like, on that specific question, but I'm not sure if I covered everything or not, but... All right. So, Member Prang, go ahead.
Okay. Did Mayor Potem have his light?
I already spoke once, so I left my other school before.
Okay, so, yes, my thoughts have shifted on this. Prior to hearing all of the public comment tonight, and now it has solidified my shift in thinking on this, hearing all of the comments tonight. The more that I sat with it and thought about it, I really just do feel that when the citizens ran their initiative to direct-elect the mayor, that voting was not addressed, and this was not asked for. A change in how we vote was not asked for. We heard overwhelmingly tonight that people feel that way really strongly, and I think we need to respect that. I think voting is such a fundamental function and right, and in my opinion, duty, that proceeding with a change around this is something that should be done very thoughtfully, and calmly, and sensibly. I agree with you, Mayor, that I agree with asking the question, not in a special election, like I stated, my preference would be in the study session. I do think that we need to put this topic to rest, and that requires the voice of the citizens to weigh in on it. So, I would be in support of asking that question on the November election. I'm not necessarily tied to that then immediately being in effect. I think that we ask the voters the question, and have some time to absorb what that result is, and apply it to the next round. Trying to think if there is anything else I wanted to say on that. I think that's what I have for right now.
Thank you, Member Prang. So, you would be in favor of putting the question on the November ballot, but not having to take effect until 2029?
Correct. The other point that I did agree on with statements that you made, Mayor, was I absolutely do believe that if we change our methodology of voting, that it should apply to all council members and not just the mayor.
Thank you, Member Prang. And also, yeah, I think you've answered everything, so I'm pretty clear on it. So, Member Ward, go ahead.
First, I'd like to answer the question of why... First, I'd like to answer the question of why, uh, because I think there hasn't been clarity tonight on what exactly is being done. I felt like, members of the public were under the impression that council was going to make this change, which, I will say, is within our authority, the way the voting system happens, the way voting occurs in this city is controlled by ordinance, not by charter, uh, with the exception of when the offices are up for election. So if we wanted to unilaterally, as the seven of us, or four of the seven of us, change the method for electing the mayor, that would be within our authority, we've not discussed doing that, what we've discussed doing is putting it on the ballot, for the citizens to vote on whether or not they want to change the method. Um, so I want to clarify that, to begin with, because I think there's been some misunderstanding there. Um, I, I have to admit, my opinion on this has changed, um, after a public comment tonight, a number of District Four residents came out, um, many of whom have not been here in some time, or are not ordinarily contributing to, uh, the process, which indicates that there's some agitation in my district over this, uh, issue in particular. Um, I, I am sympathetic to the comments about the speed with which we're doing this, um, I think the timeline i- is, is, has been quick, largely because we have the first mayor election in seventy-five years, or what have you, coming up, um, so, we wanted to presumably have this process in place for that election. I am extremely uncomfortable with having candidates on the ballot for a November election, we don't know whether or not they'll be duly elected, at the conclusion of that November election, extremely uncomfortable, not challenging the legality of it, I just don't think that it's the proper way to do things. Um, so, I don't think that I can support that. Um, furthermore, um, I understand the concerns over a special election, and I'll note that I don't think I ever once challenged the cost of the recall elections, granted, I wasn't on the ballot, but that was never part of my argument for or against the recall, in fact, I don't think I actually made any public statements for or against the recall. Um, so, the, the argument that, that none of us should be calling for a special election ever, because some of us complained about the cost of a special election, um, I, I don't feel like that applies to me, to me, there are some places where a special election is appropriate, but as I've said, I've heard a number of my constituents at District Four refer to a special election as a waste, um, or a, a, an improper use of funds, unnecessary, I'm sympathetic to all those arguments, and I'm afraid, uh, as of tonight, I've been persuaded on them. Um, I, and that brings us to where do we go from here, and I don't know that now is the proper time to answer that question, um-
Well, I, I was going to seek clarity on whether or not, just because Member Prang brought up the fact that, we'd be happy to see it on the November ballot, but not have it take effect until twenty twenty-nine, so, and we heard something different from, you, Member Noonan Camp, in terms of just, well, you haven't, you just stated, I asked the question, yeah, so, that would be the only thing that I-
I think I-
That I was seeing clarity-
I could live with Member Prang's solution, um, I, I'm also sympathetic to the argument that if it applies to any one of us, it should apply to all of us, um, I think that's a discussion that we should have with the voters as well. Um, I don't think that now's a good time for me to give my punch list of laws relative to the way people are elected in Inglewood should change, but, um, I, there are a few other things that have been moving around in the back of my mind, that I think are pieces that we might, if we want to ask the voters questions about the election processes, might want to add there as well.
Okay. Thank you, Member Ward, and, I'm trying to think, are we back to Mayor Protam, or Member Noonan Camp? Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
I, I was just going to speak to the why question, actually, I would, I, I kind of, the question going through my head is, why, you know, um, why oppose asking the citizens whether they want to, um, do an election that would get to fifty percent of the vote, uh, that's the bigger, you know, that's the bigger question to me, is what is the problem with having a runoff election? Um, I think runoff elections provide more clarity, and, um, and there, they don't have, runoff doesn't happen if you, if you have somebody who gets to fifty percent of the vote, so it's, that's not a problem, but, to me, uh, if there's some cost involved, it's well worth the cost, to figure out which one of the candidates can get to fifty percent of the vote, we want to have, the reason this is relevant now is because we have a, a mayor for the first time in a long time in Inglewood, and having broad support among the citizens of Inglewood, I, I think is critical for an elected mayor, um, and so that's why I think it's more relevant now than it ever has been, and I'm happy to see this apply to, you know, the runoff apply to all, you know, all the seats as well, I don't have any problem with that, that either, but I think it's especially relevant to our first elected mayor, and, um, and I have absolutely no problem with spending money to figure out-
Members of the public, please, sorry, sorry, Mayor Protam, I know, your whisper carries, so we're able to hear it much louder than you think we do, so, please, keep the talking and the whispering to a minimum, it carries and we can hear it up here, so.
And I listen very quietly and, and attentively to each, each one who came up and spoke of a public comment, and I would, I would appreciate the same favor returned to me, as well, but that's what, that's what I think, is this is an important question for the citizens moving into a new era of our city where we have elected mayor, let's get to fifty percent of the vote, um, however we do that, if we do it in twenty twenty-nine, if we do it in, um, this year, I think would be better, since, uh, this is our first mayor election to do it that way, but, um, I'm supportive of it either way, and applying to all seats as well.
Member Noonan Camp, and then Member Wright.
Sure, I'll weigh in as well. Um, when we talk about the why question, I think it fundamentally comes down to, is do you think that majorities matter? And in the same way, that when we show up here, it takes at least four of us to do something, and if we didn't have a quorum, and we didn't have a, a majority of the, of the true body, we wouldn't be able to take action, I think that should be applied to our elections as well, I think it's like a fundamental principle. I understand that not everyone sees that as a value, um, and I would anticipate that if we were to refer this to the ballot, the option to keep it as it is, is to vote no. Um, there was some questions tonight around, well, what about the, there's no option to keep it as it is, it's like, that option is called vote no. So I think there definitely is that, and I, and I think that everyone, you know, reasonable people can disagree on these things, but I do think it's a really important thing. To the point about the voters weren't asked about this change, they weren't asked because the individuals who put the measure on the ballot didn't include it in their measure, um, that's fine, they didn't have to, but now that we are here, I do think it's up to this body, as we execute the will of the voters, to say, okay, what is the best way to do this for our community, we need to ask the voters for some more information on that, and so I think going back to them and saying, okay, you've told us you want to direct elect your mayor, we have some questions around the best way to do that, can you give us more input on the ballot, I think is a very reasonable question, um, to act, to go back and ask the voters for that. And, you know, I'm stuck by something, or struck by something that Member Prang said earlier tonight, on the design standards, of like, wow, everyone's like unified on this thing, um, and to Member, or to Mayor Protam's point, we have a lot of different opinions right now in this community, we heard from around thirty people tonight, it's not thirty-five thousand, um, it's one, one group of individuals, I've also heard individuals who have, want, want us to pursue a majority winner, uh, system, and so, what I think we really need, in the mayor, and I would say across our city council, is individuals who can find common ground, and really earn a majority, so the majority of people in our district around our city, say, yeah, I think that we could come together and find solutions that we agree on, I don't think our system right now is set up to provide us those outcomes, and oftentimes, if you want to understand, um, if you're getting outcomes that maybe you don't like, or you think that they could be better, we have to look at how the system is actually created, and I think our system could be improved, by ensuring that we have majority winners, and so that's why I am supporting this, not as, again, a direct action of council, but going back to the voters and asking what they think about that. Um, and then also, this idea with the code, uh, tonight, there's a lot of examples that I'm pulling on from tonight, but this idea of like, if we're going to do it, let's do it right, that's why I'm more interested in doing this for this year's mayor election, because we haven't had one in a generation, it's like, well, if we're going to do it, I would love to start on one, the same foot of like, this is how we're doing it now, other than do one election with one system, and then ask the voters, and then, that takes place in a different system, that feels more, um, confusing, and potentially, like, uh, intrusive to me in our system, I would much prefer us to say, like, we're starting this new era in our community, the citizens have said that this is how they want to do the election, and we're going to move forward in that, in that way. It doesn't feel rushed to me, because again, we've been having these conversations for almost a year, I understand for some of the citizens who maybe just became aware that we were having these conversations, it could feel rushed, um, and I'm very sensitive to that, which is why I think putting it on the November ballot gives everyone some more time to understand how would it work in practice, um, before it gets applied, and I would still apply it to, to this fall's election, for the, the reasons that I stated. Again, I think reasonable people can disagree, but I do think that there's like a very strong value argument here to be made around what we think is best for our community, and I think asking the voters is never a bad idea.
Member Wright.
Thank you. I don't think the people that wrote the citizens' initiative expected to be told that they should have written how they were supposed to vote for the elected mayor within the ordinance. Um, we could end up with voter fatigue, so, we may not be looking at a special election, but we have our general election, then if we have a runoff vote, if whoever runs for mayor doesn't end up with fifty percent plus one, we have a runoff election. So, if any member from council decides to run for mayor and wins, we have an empty seat, and if five-sixths of the council doesn't vote to replace that seat, we have another special election, that's three elections in what time period? Within a matter of months, months? Four months? Five months? So how much is that going to cost the citizens, and how much voter fatigue are we going to be causing, and is that going to happen every single election potentially? And if we're doing it for all council members, could that happen for every council seat? Just a question, so how much money is that going to cause the tax years? I don't know.
Thank you, Member Wright, uh, Mayor Protam.
I think, um, like, this is, these are, these are good, good questions, I think the primary, the primary thing here is to get to fifty, you know, fifty percent of the vote for, you know, for, for the mayor in, in upcoming elections, and to speak to, um, Member Wright's, you know, question about whether or not we're going to have a special election to fill a seat, you know, that's something that the voters wanted, they wanted, that at this last election, asked by, you know, asked by some of these same folks in this room, they wanted special elections to fill a vacancy, we want to give them that. I think the voters may also want to have a special election for a runoff as well, and that's up to the voters, that's why I think we, we put this to the voters and let them decide.
Member Noonan Camp?
I'll just respond to Member Wright's question too, around voter fatigue, that is exactly why instant runoffs exist, is because people didn't want to come back from multiple actual elections, and so, they created a system where you can do all of the kind of rounds in one election, so, you might not like that policy, you might not agree with it, that's completely fine, but I am just stating that, that is literally why people created that system, so that we wouldn't have to come back multiple times, um, there's a debate, I think, in the community, on if that's what residents in Inglewood would want, um, I think that can be a, a near-term debate, or a long-term debate, um, but that is one way you, you can address that.
And, Member Wright, I think, final word, and then we'll-
Okay.
-go to how to-
So ranked, ranked choice voting, and, and my, my limited knowledge, and, and I believe you would know more, was set up to, for partisan politics, we are nonpartisan, we run nonpartisan, it was to get rid of that partisan decision, and because we run nonpartisan, that's why nonpartisan, our ranked choice voting should not be good in municipalities, because it was to get rid of those partisan elections, so, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Member Wright, all right, so I think, we've had, we've had discussion on this topic, so, I think, in, in terms of what I would be comfortable with, I would be comfortable with the, with the, uh, put it on the ballot in November, um, and potentially have, well, and then making it effective in twenty twenty-nine, and not necessarily immediately, so we'll give the voters the chance, and then we'll give plenty of time in the, actually, I, I, uh, the only reason why I'm kind of like taking a step back is because there's a, an election in twenty twenty-seven, so, potentially, it may, for the seats that are not mayor, then, potentially, we may want to consider that for twenty twenty-seven, but, I'd be happy with it not taking effect immediately, I guess is my point, so, whether it's twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-nine, that would be my preference.
And, Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
We have two at-large seats that are up for election at the same time, who, how do they get more than fifty percent of the vote, when they're running at the same time?
Well, we've had that in the past, we've had that where, um, actually, I, I haven't looked back to see whether both seats have had over fifty, I think at least one has, and maybe the other one hasn't, because they've been set up separately twice, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's usually vote two at the same time, it's-
Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
I looked into this last year, when we were looking at this, when we were, when we voted, actually, like, this council has already voted to refer ranked choice voting to the ballot, they didn't end up making it to the ballot, but just to be very clear, um, there's already been four votes for that, uh, you can separate the two at-large seats, basically, it's like, you know, at-large one, at-large two, and then people can file for different ones, and so you can run two separate elections that way, there's ways we can look at that, I don't think we have to solve that question tonight, um, I've made it clear that my preference would be that we do this for the twenty twenty-five election, because again, I think it's better to start on a consistent foot, if we are going to move to a twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-nine enactment, then I would ask the citizens both questions, I would say, do you want a traditional runoff, an instant runoff, or nothing at all, and then they can, they can choose. I think, like, again, more options are better, I want information from the voters, um, if, you know, if both fail, then they want the current system, and I think that's a very reasonable ask.
Member Prang, and then Mayor Protam, you haven't said anything on the issue-
He was first, but I'll-
Actually, I've been sitting here, yeah, I don't even get to talk.
So, sorry about that, so, yeah, we'll still go on to the left, Member Russell, and then Member Prang, go ahead.
Um, what I would, what I would like to see, is that we don't put it on the ballot in November, and we see how the election turns out, if we're not going to put it into effect till twenty twenty-nine anyway, and we put it on the general election the following year, so that then they would have a chance to weigh in, but if this works out, then why would we even put it out to the voters, so it has the potential of costing us a boatload of money every election, by having to do all of them? That's my suggestion, I mean, um, I think it's pretty clear, a- and I would like to say, it's only thirty people, but we accept thirty people when we're doing a, a survey for the city, they're a good representation, um, so, I'm just saying, I think that we probably, um, should wait, that is my opinion, I, we didn't put on here, the other option is do nothing at all-
Yeah.
-this time. Thank you.
That is always an option, Member Russell, thank you.
I think that's a great option.
Member Prang, go ahead.
Thank you, um, I, I think your comments are interesting, I'm not sure I'm fully aligned with all of it-
Maybe not.
Um, but, I, I still like the idea of asking the question, because we've been having the conversation, and there's this debate, obviously, I think we all heard loud and clear, people didn't ask for this, but we do keep having the conversation as a council, and I want the voters to be able to make the decision on it, so, I, I would like to see us ask the question, I wouldn't necessarily be adverse to maybe push it out to the next general election, I'm still okay with considering, um, this November, and I think, um, in response to a concern that, um, Member Noonan Camp brought up, around doing it right, and kind of referencing something that I said earlier, in my opinion, it, it is doing it right, to ask the question, and then have some time, like I said, when I say absorb it, I mean, take the time to look at the result of what the voters say, and if the voters have decided to make a change, then be really intentional in having those conversations with the community, talking to everyone about the decision that was made, and doing education around that. Um, so, I feel like that's more of a win-win, like, we, I, I do feel like it's a new process, the voters have, have said, we want you to direct elect our mayor, that's a new process, so I think it's very fair to ask the question, how should we do it? Um, but I think that how we're approaching asking that question, and the timing of how we implement things is really important, and there's a lot of passion around this, and people feel really sensitive, and, and I've had, you know, conversations where I, I keep hearing reference to, people are asking for a change, I haven't heard from them, and so, I would like to see that same outpouring come forward to us, or even just send me an in, an individual email, to say, I want to see a change, and, and I think that's where I shifted gears to land where I landed tonight, was because I haven't had that outreach, and I don't hear people asking for it, and, as much as I like to have my own opinion on how things should be as a council member, I think on something like this, we really need to nail it right, in listening to the voters.
And, Mayor Protam.
Just one more, one more thought, could we ask the citizens if they want to do a runoff, if they want it to go- if they want it to go into effect immediately or in the next election? If we're going to go with what the, what the citizens vote on, then why not ask them when they want it to go into effect?
I think that's, that's kind of where my thought is. It, it seems like a lot of questions. I, so I think what I'm hearing, I think that there's at least support to having the conversation about having it on the November ballot. It also sounds like they, there potentially may be a need for a study session on this topic because I'm hearing different variations of what the ballot questions may be. And I want to have that con, if we're going to have that conversation, I think it should happen within a study session and it, um, I, I think it just requires a little bit more time before, uh, we ultimately vote on whether or not to have this on the November ballot. So, go ahead, Mayor Putem.
I, I, I think if gathering, you know, gathering what everybody said tonight, what I feel like the only thing we have for or possibly five votes for is a November ballot for a runoff to go into effect in a subsequent election. I don't know if we need a study session. I think we have enough support to do that. You know, that's not my first choice, but I think we have enough support on council to do.
I heard that, but also heard different variations of potentially other questions or other process questions that may come from that. I heard that from Member Ward, so.
Sure, right, but I was just looking at, lowest common denominator, what do we all, what do, what do four or five of us agree on? I think that's the only.
Right, I, I agree with that, that's what I kind of hear, but is there an appetite for a study session on the topic to have at least a more conversation? Go ahead, Member Russell, yeah.
Why would we do that if we have consensus tonight to not do anything?
No, that, so I hear there is consensus to do a November ballot question.
Uh, go down and weigh, have everybody weigh in.
Okay.
Again, because we've had arguments because people are trying to convince other people to vote with them.
Okay, that's fair. So let's, let's start on your end. So, Member Russell, I heard that status quo, no change.
Status quo, no change. I'm not saying I'm not willing to ask a question, but not for this.
Okay. Member Prang.
I'd like to see it on the, the November ballot with a future implementation date.
Okay. Thank you, Member Prang. Member Wright?
No change.
No change. Myself, November with a future, whether it's twen, with a future date, twenty twenty-nine. Uh, Mayor Putem.
That's three.
That's three, okay. Go ahead, Member Ward.
I have to thank Member Prang for kind of giving me a gut check moment here. Uh, I'm, I'm on the fence, um, but I'm going to stick with my original. I, I heard a very vocal crowd from District Four tonight tell me not to do this, so I'm going to stick with no.
So no, oh, okay. And Member Neen Camp?
I would support putting on the November ballot. I don't know if we have alignment around just runoff or also including the question on the instant runoff. I would prefer putting both on there, but I would be happy with.
See, those are the variations that I'm hearing, so things like that.
I didn't, it wasn't earlier in the thing, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Okay. So for me, like I've heard four for November with a future, uh, future implementation date, so.
But I, I think the only, I mean, I, I don't want to see instant runoff on it, so I, I, I think it would just be a runoff if.
Same here, I, I'm not interested in the instant.
I think we have, you know, something that four of us could move forward on.
Okay. So I think that we're clear in that, so, uh, November ballot. So again, we're going to be voting on this, uh, in the future, so City Attorney, is there anything else to add?
Yes, that's the one that's going to try to draft what you, the direction you just gave me. There was some, um, uh, discussion about whether to apply it simply to the mayor or whether to apply it to all of councils, starting with twenty twenty-seven versus just mayor in twenty twenty-nine. Uh, how would you like it drafted?
My preference would be for all members of council, so not only mayor, so one question on mayor, one, one question on city council.
So two, two questions?
Yes.
So city council starting in twenty twenty-seven and mayor starting in twenty twenty-nine?
That, that was where I was wondering whether or not we should have a discussion about that. I'd be happy to start it both in twenty twenty-nine, but I could see the value of having it in twenty twenty-seven as well. So, I'm sorry, what, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Member Neen Camp, twenty twenty-seven. Member Prang, twenty twenty-seven. There we are. So two separate questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Ellis, thank you very much to members of council for that discussion, um, and thank you to members of the community for coming out as well and voicing your, uh, your opinion on the matter. All right, so I have nothing else for mayor's choice, council members' choices. Go ahead, Member Neen Camp.
I will be brief and only share the most timely one. Um, we heard the Affordable Housing Task Force recommendations from staff and I actually heard from a citizen who is here tonight, um, that one of the omissions that we heard, uh, that was not actually in the final report from the Affordable Housing Task Force was land trusts, which are a really simple thing that, it's interesting, the task force talked about it the entire time. It was in all of their final, um, reviews and they were constantly elevating it and then somehow it didn't make it into the final recommendation and I almost wonder if it was an administrative error. But regardless, I'm wondering if I can get council support to add exploring land trusts to the work that staff is doing to explore affordable housing options because I think it's highly valuable and there was a lot of support from the task force, uh, throughout their process.
I'd be in support of it. I've seen good implementation of it nationwide as well, so. Anyone else? Member Ward?
I'll, I'll rely on your statement that the Affordable Housing Task Force talked about it extensively and I'll, I'll give my consent.
It was, yeah, it was part of the presentation as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for council members' choice? Go ahead, Member Wright.
Thank you. Um, I've been to multiple ribbon counties recent, ribbon county, cuttings. Oh my gosh, all right, it's getting like, sorry folks, ribbon cuttings recently, so there is, um, one, um, business, um, God Save the Cream, fantastic place, um, Lava Island, great place for kids, can't think of the other. I missed Gallo, um, I was out of town and then there's several coming up, so I highly recommend our residents just enjoy those places. They were phenomenal, had a great time. I know I'm missing a couple others that I've attended, so I just want to speak out about those, um, new Inglewood businesses and stuff, they were fantastic.
Speaks to the great work of the chamber that they have so many ribbon cuttings and the work of staff as well for attracting these businesses. Go ahead, Member Russell.
Um, there, I did a council request tonight and I, um, I really would like council direction on what we ought to do. I mean, the three of us at-large council members have received all of these emails over and over. Meg Froelich has received emails and I would like somebody to look into all of this independently because it has gotten to a point that there, this woman is so disrespected that, um, a- and I just would like to get to the bottom of what's really going on. But I don't, I don't know what to ask for. I need help from the council to figure out how to help this woman.
Thank you, Member Russell. Yeah, it's come to the point where it's been a couple years, it's been multiple emails, it's gotten to the point where there is no communication between staff and the two neighbors, right? So I think I would be in favor of that, I would, well, I would be in favor of just getting a how did we get here kind of snapshot on this, on this item because it does sound like there's private property rights that are being questioned. There's also the aspect that, uh, uh, at least one of the neighbors does not agree with that assessment, but it just seemed, I'm, I'm so, it's so convoluted now at this point that we need the facts on what's occurring. I'd be in support of that and then identifying whether someone from the outside needs to be brought in with fresh eyes to see what the, what the main issue should be, so.
And, and I agree with that, but I don't want a city mediator going to fix this problem because that has started and that's made it worse.
I was going to say, that has occurred and it didn't help.
Right.
So, right. That did occur several months ago, if not a year, so, okay.
Okay.
Um, I agree with you, Member Russell, I'd be happy, city manager, if we can get a little bit more information on that.
The city attorney and I think that an outside council would be great to look into this.
Yeah, okay. There we are. Thank you for bringing that up, Member Russell.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, anyone else for council members' choice?